Calling to order, the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for municipality of Anchorage for October 10th, 2011. The Secretary of Police call a roll.
Nancy Pease?
Here.
Jim Frederick? Connie Yoshimura?
Here.
Arthur Eishem?
Here.
Bruce Phelps?
Here.
Stacy Dean?
Here.
Terry Parks? Dana Prue?
In the room.
Richard Wilson?
Here.
Okay, well now, oh. Okay, the, move on to the minutes. The minutes were not completed for this week, so I'll need a motion to postpone the next scheduled meeting.
A move to postpone.
Is there a second, please, machine? Okay, moved by Ms. Yoshimura, seconded by Ms. Dean. Any discussion? Any objection? Okay, the minutes were postponed, the next scheduled meeting. Ms. Yoshimura, if you'll please take care of the disclosures.
Ms. Pease, do you have anything to disclose this evening?
No.
Commissioner Wilson?
No.
Commissioner Parks?
No.
Commissioner Phelps?
No.
Commissioner Dean?
No.
Okay. Chair, Eishem?
Yes, I read the minutes for the case of 2011-073 because I was not here on 7/11/11 when it was first heard, so I've read the minutes, so I'm prepared to participate in that one.
Okay. And I would like to disclose in the matter of 2011-073 that I have in the past had business relationships with Ekutna and that we, from time to time, engage in conversations, informal conversations regarding residential land development in the Eagle River area because we both are stakeholders in that area, but I do not have a financial interest and have no specific knowledge regarding case 2011-073.
Okay, thank you for that disclosure, Ms. Yoshimura. Okay, we need a motion to postpone case 2011-091 to 11/7/11. Okay, Mr. Wilson?
A move.
Okay, seconded by Ms. Dean. And the reason for that is it's been requested by the petitioner. So is there any discussion? Any objection? Okay, 2011-091 is postponed to 11/7/11. We're now moving on to the consent agenda. Need a positive motion for approval of D1A and D4A.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Parks. Is there any cases that anybody wants to pull?
I just have a comment as it regards to D1A, Resolution 2011-032, related case 2011-096. I will not be voting because I was not in attendance at that meeting.
Thank you. Any, either of these have to be pulled? Okay, any objection? Those cases are approved. Okay, we're now moving down to regular agenda, F5 other, there's an information item on case 2010-128. Staff, do you have anything that you wish to add to that?
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is just a formal notification of a closeout of a conditional use.
Okay, thank you. There's no action required on our part. Okay, we'll now move on to the public hearings, case 2010-100 and 2011-108. Those two cases will be heard concurrently, and when I read the instructions, everybody, I'll let you know what the timeframes are for testifying. So if we could hear from the staff on those two cases, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to clarify on the agenda for case 2011-108, the petitioner is not Alaska Pacific University. This is an amendment to the Comprehensive Plan and is coming from the municipality of So I'm going to address first case 2011-108. This is an amendment to modify the UMed University and Medical District Framework Master Plan. This amendment will add four new land use categories and require both a change in the plan text and the plan maps. The additional land use categories will apply only to APU and amend the land use plan map for the lands only on the APU campus. Under AMC 2105040, the Planning and Zoning Commission reviews any proposed modifications to the Comprehensive Plan before the Assembly may act on a proposed amendment. The UMed plan was adopted by the Assembly as an element of the Anchorage 2020 Comprehensive Plan in October 2003. It was amended once in 2009 to reflect changes in the southwest corner, including changing land use classifications and making several amendments regarding circulation. The subject property is zoned PLI. No change is proposed in the zoning classification. The primary goal of the UMed plan is to enable existing institutions to continue to grow and be competitive without damaging the natural environments in which they are set. The existing land use map designates a significant portion of APU as preservation open space and development reserve. These land use categories are defined on page three of the staff report. The Planning Division is recommending an amendment to the UMed plan that will add four new land use categories. The land use categories to be added to the plan are APU recreation open space, APU institutional core, APU endowment development priority, and APU endowment reserve. These four definitions are defined on page four of the staff report. This amendment acknowledges the need for clarity regarding open space designations and greater interest in development of the area. The revised land use map reflects the intent of the UMed plan to designate the most critical habitat and buffer areas as open space. Those areas include a 65-foot buffer along the Chester Creek Trail to the east, a 65-foot setback from University Lake to the south, and the Class B wetlands in the northwest corner. One of the discussion topics when the UMed plan was originally approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission at the July 14th, 2003 meeting was the meaning and interpretation of the preservation open space land use designation. Multiple commissioners noted on the record concern that the land use categories could unduly restrict the institution's development of their lands. Chair Henry Penny stated, quote, "Understood that this plan is a framework master plan, the intent of which is to provide a guidance for development, not restrict it," and felt that the commission had clearly stated its intent this evening that this plan is not intended to lock up land into perpetuity. There was a similar discussion at the Assembly hearing on October 21st, 2003, when the UMed plan was adopted by the Assembly. Although the preservation open space designation was amended to clarify that it applied to Class A wetlands, the mapping of this classification covers Class B wetlands on the APU land as well as large portions of APU's developable uplands. The planned implementation of the UMed plan also calls for a land conservation program as a tool to preserve areas with natural values. To date, no conservation easement program has been established. The Planning Division recommends approval of the amendment to the UMed University District Framework Plan as follows: to add the following four land use classifications, APU recreation open space, APU institutional core, APU endowment development priority, and APU endowment reserve, and to change the land use map to reflect the land use designations as depicted in Exhibit A. So that was regarding the changes to the UMed plan.
And as I understand it, when we actually do our voting, we need to approve this first before we approve the second one?
That's correct.
Okay. Go ahead and continue.
So the accompanying case is case 2010-100, and this is a request to approve the Alaska Pacific University Master Plan. Currently, Title 21 does not clearly define the intent, submittal requirements, or finding criteria for an institutional plan, so this submittal was evaluated for conformity with elements of the Comprehensive Plan and the UMed plan. However, generally speaking, the purpose of an institutional master plan is to provide a framework for development to permit flexibility while providing a level of understanding to the surrounding community about the potential growth of the institution and the impacts to the municipality regarding infrastructure and services. Assembly ordinance 2007-141 was adopted in December 2007 and allows for amendments to setbacks and parking requirements with an approved master plan. So this master plan requests that yard setbacks be based on the campus as a single parcel and that the interior common lot lines not be subject to front, side, and rear yard requirements. Proposed conditions of approval 6A and 8B reflect the need for a site plan indicating the established setbacks for the campus as a whole, but in general, the municipality supports that request. The, that same assembly ordinance also allowed for amendments to parking requirements with approved site plan, and in May of 2011, the municipality accepted and concurred with a parking variance memo establishing a parking ratio of 1 to 600 square feet, or, yeah, 1 to 600 square feet for existing and future administrative offices and education buildings. The Planning Division also concurs with a request to allow all parking lots and structures to be located anywhere within the campus. The APU master plan requests that lot coverage calculations be based on a campus as a whole rather than on individual parcels. The master plan also states that accessory uses may be located with any of the land, within any of the land use districts on campus. Neither of these zoning amendments are permissible underneath existing Title 21, and these amendments to the development standards would only become effective if and when the code is changed by ordinance, and proposed condition of approval number 9A and 9B address this issue. This subject, in regards to its conformity with Anchorage 2020, this property is located in a major employment area according to the land use policy map, and the Planning Division found that the master plan was in compliance with the characteristics of a major employment center, and those are further described on page seven of the staff report. Regarding the UMed master plan, if the UMed plan amendment that we're discussing here tonight is approved by the Assembly, the land use map in the APU master plan is consistent with the UMed plan, and so proposed condition of approval number four reflects the need to have the Assembly approve the UMed plan. The UMed plan also includes detailed guidelines that are listed in Appendix B to the staff report. The APU master plan addresses many of these design guidelines, but not all of them, and there's a complete comparison in Appendix B. The design guidelines aren't a menu to choose from, and the intent is to provide flexibility in how each of the design guidelines apply, but they must demonstrate that they are meeting the intent of the design guidelines. So recommended condition of approval seven requires that future site plan review ensures not only compliance with the APU master plan, but also the design guidelines in the UMed Regarding circulation, I just want to make it clear that the, that the decision and discussion tonight before you is, is not discussing sort of the regional access issues that were, is also being discussed currently. There was a recent reconnaissance study about the northern access to the district, and that is not a part of the discussion or the decision tonight. Trails, the APU campus has a significant amount of trails throughout the undeveloped portion of the campus, and these trails are frequently viewed by the community as public trails with public access. However, the only trails that are in public use easement are the Chester Creek Trail and a small portion of the Loop Trail around the University Lake and the northern terminus of a trail along Mosquito Lake. The area-wide trails plan designates a multiple-use unpaved trail across the APU campus connecting the University Lake Trail to the Goose Lake Trails. This trail is a portion of the Tour of Anchorage Trail. The same trail is designated as an APU ski trail on the UMed master plan. The design guidelines in the UMed plan demonstrate an emphasis on creating a coordinated public trail system that unifies the UMed district. The UMed plan design guidelines include, there's many of them listed on page 10 and 11 of the staff report, some of them include, say, provide public access to the trails, connect campus local trails to the regional trail system, provide direct connection to the trail system, seek opportunities to establish pedestrian connections between the campus and the adjacent neighborhoods. The APU master plan addresses trail and trail access when it defines recreation, when it defines the recreation and open space land use category, and it also includes a few design guidelines regarding trails. It talks about locating academic buildings near housing and considering pedestrian access. However, on page 27, the APU master plan makes a firm stance on the future of public trail use by stating that the Chester Creek Trail and the Loop Trail around University Lake are the only public trails and the only trails on campus that are within designated trail easements. All other trails within campus boundary are private and are not within specific trail easements and may be modified, relocated, or closed by APU as its campus needs change over time, irregardless of their appearance on any municipal trail or district, or district plans. The municipality concurs that the trails on APU are camp, on APU campus are private trails. The Chester Creek Trail easement along the east property boundary provides adequate regional trail connectivity throughout the district. The department recommends approval of the, of the Alaska Pacific University master plan subject to the, to the nine conditions listed on page 13 through 15 of the staff report. Thank you.
Are there any questions for staff? Well, let's see, Mr. Wilson, why don't you go ahead and go first since you raised your hand and I looked at you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First staff, do we know when the DOT study of the road access on the north, to the north, will be completed? It says imminently in this document.
Through the chair, Commissioner Wilson, imminently, at the time that I wrote it, wasn't done, but it has been published now. It's called the Northern Access to the University and Medical District Reconnaissance Study Report. I believe this is the first step in evaluating alternatives, and the petitioner may be able to speak more about that.
Thank you. Ms. Yoshimura?
I'm not really very familiar with institutional master plans, so help me out here for a minute. We're not erasing, we want to take these seven parcels and treat them like one track, but we're not erasing lot lines?
Through the chair, Commissioner Yoshimura, that's correct, it's not, we're not replating anything, we're not changing the legal descriptions through this. Through, in, in the current Title 21, the only, the only amendments or changes to the existing zoning that are allowed by having an institutional master plan are, in regards to the setbacks and in regards to the parking requirements.
Okay, so we're keeping the track, we're keeping the individual lots, but asking, for example, that the parking be considered as a result of one track for all the buildings?
That's correct.
Right, so perhaps when the petitioner stands up, he can answer why he doesn't, why they don't want to erase the lot lines and treat it as one track?
That, that would be a good question.
Okay. My second question is, if we approve this master plan, would planning and zoning ever see this again under any circumstances? There's no conditional use, there's no subject to design review, this is it? Is that, is that your understanding?
This is zoned PLI, and so it, in the PLI district, all permitted use has, has to go through public facility site plan review, and that is normally done through, I believe, through UDC, and is a, it's a non-public hearing item. The only other exception would be if there was something that required a conditional use otherwise, then that would come before the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions, staff? Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing, and I'm gonna read the rules first. After the staff presentation is completed on public hearing items, the chair will be asked for public testimony on the issue. Persons who wish to testify will follow the time limits established by the commission. And the time limits that we've decided for this evening, since this is a combined case, two, two cases, the petitioner's gonna have 15 minutes. Representatives of groups such as community councils or PTAs will have seven minutes, and individuals will have five minutes. Now this, these time limits apply only to this particular situation right now, because I'll read the rules again when we get down to where you only have three minutes to talk, as an example. When your testimony is complete, you may be asked questions by the commission. You may only testify once on any issue unless questioned by the commission. An individual may have appeal rights related to any action the Planning and Zoning Commission takes. Appeals must be filed with the clerk's office within 20 days after the Planning and Zoning Commission's final decision. Any individual may request written findings from any commission decision within seven days. So we'd like to hear from the petitioner, please.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Tim Potter with DalhKm, representing APU tonight. Helping me tonight is going to be Mary Ellen Tuttle, a planner with Dalh, and also John Schwam with APU and Dr. Bance, president of APU, in the audience to answer any specific questions. I think it's important to note that we'd like to retain five minutes or so for rebuttal time and indicate that this is a, a product that's multi-years in the making, in fact, probably goes back more than a decade of when we did the first bubble diagram master plan for APU, working with their board of directors and, and development committee. At that point, there was discussion about the UMed plan and, and several of the options showed major road corridors going through APU's campus, and the board felt it prudent to meet and talk about their long-term needs as a private university and, and whether or not they should accept a road being punched through their campus as, as the end. With all that in mind, we've gone back, reviewed the UMed plan, we've looked at the, taken several years to put the master plan together to try and address the long-term needs of the university itself, and there are a couple of key items, and Ms. Yoshimura hit on one of them that I'll try and explain real quick, and that is, okay, there's nine tracks of land there now, why don't you simply just put it into a single track like Providence Hospital and then call it truly a campus and not have any of these issues? That would be nice, but in the PLI zoning district, we can't do a commercial track subdivision, and that would give us the allowance because contrary to what Providence does, which they own everything, APU owns the land, and in some cases, on their endowment properties, they lease the land, and the lessee then builds the building and leases it for some period of time, and then when they leave, the building becomes property of APU and a furtherance of their capital improvement program. And in the meantime, when someone finances a building, they, the financial organization typically wants land as collateral, and we can't put the entire campus up, all 175 acres, to be the collateral for a bank or financial institution for a small building like the USGS building. So that's why we're caught in this dilemma that we have traditional plating, we have nine parcels currently, we get in a stickler because we're actually leasing land and/or leasing buildings. You can't lease land in Anchorage or in the state of Alaska without the land being subdivided, so that's, that's the reason we have, at least right now, nine parcels. In the future, there will be more, and in doing that, the interior lot lines, we've asked for relief from the side and rear yard setback requirements, so that's, depending on how the buildings sit and how they're structured to associate with adjacent property, it doesn't seem appropriate to look at it on a lot-by-lot basis for parking or setbacks and/or uses, and that gives us the ability to meet the fire code requirements for separation of structures, but we don't necessarily have to meet a land use requirement for a yard setback, which at this point, within a campus, is kind of irrelevant when you really look at it. The other item is parking, and the code, of course, says that you have to provide your required parking for that specific use on that specific piece of property and/or get variances. We're trying to look at this from a campus-wide standpoint. It is a very nice and beautiful campus property, and it is a private university, which is a little bit different than UAA, and the number of people that actually own cars and drive cars from a student standpoint, so the population's a bit different, utilization of the land's a little bit different, and we've actually done multiple parking studies over the last decade that quantify and qualify that one space per 600 square feet of the campus educational buildings for classrooms and office space more than adequately meets the required parking. So in that context, you're trying to keep a simple, compact campus and have environmentally sound development, it seems appropriate to look at it from a campus-wide standpoint because that's how the parking's being used. So we'll probably have small amounts of parking related to the specific building themselves, and then we'll have pockets of parking that will be appropriately located, that will be used by the entire campus, which is currently what's being done. So that's why we're looking for that relief, so we can truly look at it from a campus standpoint, because that's what it, what it has been, what it is, and what it will continue to be, and we'd like the ability to continue on that planning approach. It's also important for the commission to understand that about 30 to 40 percent of the operating dollars utilized by APU actually come from, income from their endowment properties. So when we talk about endowment properties, that's truly what they are. They underwrite a significant portion of the cost of the university to provide its programs, educational programs to the, to the students, and the other activities that they have for the general public. So it becomes a very important factor, and as any of you that have been in town a long time know that AMU, which was the predecessor of APU, basically closed once and almost went under at least twice that I'm aware of. If it weren't for some benefactors in town that, that came up and built facilities and donated money, you know, this great facility might not be here. It does provide a great educational program to the community, draws people from all over the world, from a student and teacher standpoint, so that's a real positive thing. The idea is that we go into this knowing a little bit more about what we really have to work with, and in that vein, you can see our proposed master plan is the first drawing closest to me, and that tries to go through and identify the usability of the properties. closest to me, and that tries to go through and identify the usability of the properties from an endowment property standpoint, core area for educational buildings and such, and administrative offices, and residential housing for on-campus student housing. And in that light, we have a couple of different designations, kind of a short-term endowment and then a long-term endowment property, some of that being dependent upon, obviously, market growth, but also the infrastructure that may or may not occur over time, still maintaining those recreational fields that are there and being utilized by the campus at this time. The next drawing is the existing UMed district plan from a land use designation for the APU campus. And you can see that contrary to a lot of the testimony, and in fact, the actual discussion and narrative within that adopted plan, that map takes a significant portion of the campus and puts it into an open space category, and doesn't follow the definitional language in the plan that said what open space and open space reserves were, those being a wetlands. It's also important to note that within that plan, it also indicates that when the city were to and did designate those properties, and they would take them away from a development standpoint, the campus or property owner was supposed to be reimbursed either through some type of monetary notion or a land trade, and I'm not going to flippantly say it, but to date, no checks arrived, and no offer for payment has occurred. So not only do we believe that the map does not follow, in fact, what the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Assembly really looked at and discussed at the hearings, but what was written in the narrative, and we'd like to go back and fix that as part of this modification to the UMed district plan and the APU master plan. Will there be further review of plans in the future? Yes. Each plan that comes through, while we have a one parking space per 600 square feet of a building, the caveat is that each building gets looked at from a land use and building standpoint, and traffic engineering will evaluate that as to what they believe the parking requirements will be for that building. So we anticipate that there may be some endowment buildings that may have a higher density of use on a day-to-day basis, and may have a requirement higher than that, and that's built into this review process. If we have a conditional use under our regulations, then that building has to come back for review. Also, any public facilities come back for Public Facility Site Plan Review. So as you've got USGS, Fish and Wildlife Service, Oil and Gas Commission, if anybody else that was a state or federal entity located a structure out there, it would have to go through a Public Facility Site Plan Review process. In most cases, those are the endowment properties. There are road extension discussions being held. University Lake Drive, there was an earmark for about $6 million for extension of that road, and we're still awaiting those to proceed on the contract to go in for design of that road. In a prior life, in a prior traffic engineer, we were told that on a building-by-building basis, we would be able to go forward or not to develop any more properties on campus because of the two dead ends, so we're attempting to work into that, and this plan will show that there is a loop that is being developed, so that there can be two ways in and two ways out. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Potter? Mr. Wilson?
Mr. Potter, could you talk a little more, you kind of ran out of time there, and I wanted to give you a little more time to talk about the traffic and transportation, roads, access. We've got a real traffic jam there. And what is going to be the answer to this thing in your mind, or in your professional view, to getting in and out safely, and emergency access, and just daily traffic? We're limited to west and south access.
Boy, I'll probably have to be politically correct and not say anything about the sports facility.
By the way, can you point out where? I don't even know where that's supposed to be located.
To answer your question, Mr. Wilson, the access has been talked about a lot, and what we've been looking at is working towards having a loop interior of the campus. So University Lake Drive would service most of the endowment properties on the south and the east side of campus, and that the Upper University Drive would handle the scholastic portion of the campus, which is up on top of the hill, the loop that already exists up there that goes all the way back to the Atwood Center. The idea would be, as you can see, a couple of different lines, one curved and one straight, one black, one yellow, that would connect those two, and that would be to provide that security outlet, that if there was an accident or something happened, that if one was blocked, you could get all the way through campus on the other. Now, as far as gaining access out to Elmore, there's actually a design that we've discussed with the city as part of their analysis of this entire area and how they're going to deal with UA's expansion of the sports arena and that. And that would to have University Lake Drive actually jogged down adjacent to the hotel that's been built.
Could you show us, I don't know, just point it and then go back to the mic?
Public lesssee wherever it's drawing through, it's through those sideways, so you can see what's going on.
Just a minute, are these maps in this?
Yes. Right. If, I don't know if Elmore's working.
Yeah, let's see if that's working. We'll try and get it on the screen.
Apologize for the lack of intensity of the light, but with this being the interior loop at University Drive right now, and this being University Lake Drive, and the sports arena facility going over here north of the existing student housing, the concept that's been talked about with the city is that University Lake Drive would actually come down and divert down below the UAA facilities building, so between that and the hotel, and come out to either a roundabout or a signalized intersection at this location. That would be in common with road development coming out from the sports facility, and that would be so that everybody could have multidirectional access in the area. The then extension of University Lake Drive coming up and coming back out this way is what was being talked about before, with this being the location of the sports arena for the public. So that's what's been discussed, and that's pretty much how the access will go. As far as the northern access, which is where I think you might have been going, UA's Board of Directors went on record at least a decade ago indicating that if, in fact, the community determined that they needed for safety or whatever, a road connection connecting Northern Lights Boulevard to Providence Drive and now Elmore, used to be Bregaw, that their choice would be, if the community determined that it was necessary, that their choice would be on the existing utility alignment that runs basically from Bregaw at Northern Lights through the campus area down here, and down to the intersection of now Elmore and Providence Drive. So this is where there's a high-pressure gas main, sewer line, water line, and those utilities were put in over 30 years ago.
So what's the status of that planning process?
That reconnaissance study has been put out for public comment, and it's in public comment period right now, and maybe, when does it close?
Hi, Mary Ellen Tuttle, Dalhukam Engineers. It has been posted, and the DOT is accepting comments through November 3, and then the reconnaissance report and all of the comments that have been collected through November 3 will be submitted to AMATS for consideration.
So it's not on the AMATS plan at this time?
It's in the Long Range Transportation Plan as a study project. That's what resulted in the reconnaissance study being started, and I believe it is shown as a future project in the draft Metropolitan Transportation Plan.
So with the construction of a sports facility, I'm sorry to take so much time, Mr. Chairman, but with the construction of a major facility with thousands of people showing up right in the heart there, is that why we're doing the reconnaissance study to the north? Is that the trigger for that?
It was not the trigger for that, actually. The need for that reconnaissance study was identified before the arena was proposed.
When do you think that process will be finished? And will this commission receive that for consideration?
The reconnaissance study, as I mentioned, will be submitted to AMATS, and I believe this committee sits as the public advisory committee for AMATS, so I would imagine that you might see it as part of that. But DOT's project is pretty much done now, and they will take the reconnaissance study and all of the comments that are submitted through November 3, and will give it to AMATS, and then whether it goes any further from that is a decision that AMATS will have to make.
Okay, thanks.
Ms. Yoshimura?
Through the chair. Mr. Potter, on page 28 and 29 of the master plan, you discuss the utilities, and as I understand it, both the water and sanitary sewer are owned by APU, is that correct?
Let's see, which page was that?
Page 28 and 29.
In the case packet?
In.
In this plan? There are a mixture of services and main lines on campus, and many of the large utilities are actually municipally owned. Some of the lines are owned by the university.
Well, 2.3.7.2 sanitary sewer, the sewer lines on campus are entirely owned by APU?
I'm trying to get to the map there.
And then it goes on to say, since the piping has surpassed 40 years of service, it may be at or approaching the end of its service life. So I'm really wondering if, how APU plans to, with future construction, manage their water and sewer utilities that are nearing the end of their life, economic life?
I couldn't hear all of that, and I apologize that I have a really bad cold right now, because my ears aren't working anywhere near as well as they usually do. But the University Lake Drive, which is this lower road facility, has public sewer and water and storm drainage built in it, and as it gets extended, it will then connect this loop and provide this endowment area with sewer, as well as it will loop this water line, which AWU is very interested in having this linkage out to here, because it does a big supportive move for their pressure and quantity of water. So that will be the primary element. Most of the utilities here on site are, as the sewer goes, some of the sewer up in this area is private APU, and just simply goes to the housing in the back of the property. But new utilities are being brought in and extended to service all of the endowment properties. And in fact, right now, the USGS building, which is located here, is fully served by, and you can almost see it here on the photo, that's the building, and this clearing that comes down there is sewer and water. So sewer and water on the lower extent of the road has been extended all the way to here, and comes up and services this building.
Well, there are some suggestions here regarding sewer, that if the sewer lines are found to be in poor condition, they should be scheduled for replacement or rehabilitation, and then underwater, it says if the water lines are determined to be in poor condition, they should be scheduled for replacement either as a standalone project or as part of other construction projects being performed on campus. And so I'm just curious if there's been any discussion about the cost of this sort of replacement. Here we are, asked to approve a master plan that includes several new buildings, but yet we have decaying infrastructure on site. I see that as an issue.
Yeah, actually, the infrastructure that's going in on University Lake Drive will be obviously new. As new facilities and/or big retrofits, as some of the buildings have been redone, there has been an analysis of the utilities. They are adequate, they are aged, just like the city has fairly old utilities that are still working. And as part of this master plan, we actually did a capital improvement program and budget from updating the buildings, utilities, and all that, and that's been an ongoing discussion for about the last decade. So where there are opportunities to put new utilities in to service the facilities, that's being done. It is a capital expenditure. What is nice is that when the endowment properties are developed, those utility extensions are typically part of those projects, so they're a funded deal rather than a huge hit from a capital standpoint.
I have one other question regarding the trails. None of the trails within these lots are paved, is that correct? Except for the one along the?
The one along the east side is paved.
Right. That's a public trail, but not a private trail.
And that is public, and it is in a very large easement going down the east side of the property. The other trails are, for the most part, dirt and/or gravel, and are used by walking, runners, APU's ski team, University of Alaska's cross-country team, variety of people, including the general public, to cross-country ski, walk, bike ride, and that.
And who maintains those trails, or are they maintained at all?
That's an excellent question for the university. I think that the Nordic Ski Club is the primary maintainer of the ski trails through the campus as part of their system, but as far as the running trails and that, I'm not sure that anybody does any significant maintenance at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions for Mr. Potter? Okay, you've got five minutes for rebuttal. Okay, is there anybody else that would wish to testify? Please come forward and state your name for the record. Let me know whether you represent a group or whether you're speaking for yourself.
Hi there, to all. My name is Dennis Maloney. I've been a resident of Anchorage since 1957. I'm a president of the Goose Lake Property Owners Association. I have lived on Goose Lake in that area since 1984 continuously. I was a member of the Goose Lake Planning Task Force for four years. I was a member of the University of Alaska Citizens Advisory Committee for three and a half years. I was a member of the Municipal Traffic Planning Group, Advisory Group, for a couple of years. I have intimate knowledge that no one else has, and I've seen it all. As Jim Parsons, my ex-neighbor, used to say, institutions have no memory. And so what happens is, you keep seeing things come back over and over and over again. Pushing through Bregaw has been an itch in the planner's hands for 30 years. It's a straight line that is not complete. It goes through a park- It goes through a park-like setting, and it keeps the university area looking like a park. First of all, let's talk about briefly the university's sports center. There's a lot of boo-ha-ha about the traffic needs of that. I would remind you all that the Sullivan Sports Arena does create traffic in its area whenever the hockey team plays, Friday, Saturday, maybe Wednesday night, after work, not during rush hour, after dinner. You don't have to build a highway to allow people to go to the university's sports center. It won't have the attendance of the Aces, it'll be close. But this idea that you have to make, build a highway, is a lot of hooey if you think about it. And I urge you to use your common sense when evaluating what these people are telling I've used the trails, I'm a little beyond that now, and I'm a little ill, so I don't do that. I used the ski trails for 25 or 30 years. APU, formerly AMU, is a private institution, does not have the rights the State of Alaska has. And once a trail is established for more than seven years, it's there. You can't take it away. There'll be lawsuits, and you can't take away this right that people have to travel across their land. Secondly, APU has grown wealthy. It hasn't built too many academic buildings other than the Cargotstein Building in years, although its endowment has increased over and over. The State of Alaska passed a law allowing the oil companies to make a contribution to APU rather than pay taxes. So they make a contribution to APU in lieu of state taxes. Now, you were talking about a few moments ago, the sewer and water that this suggestion will require. Who's going to pay for that? APU is a nonprofit organization, doesn't pay the property taxes. That means the taxes go, and the cost of building the infrastructure entirely on the taxpayers of Anchorage. At least Providence is building its own roads and sewers. This won't happen with APU. The taxpayers will be burdened. If you look at the endowment buildings they have, they're substantial. You've got the Alaska Spine Clinic, that's on leased land from the APU. They pay rent, you're going to have more. And if you let this go through, you won't be able to limit what they do with that piece of land on Northern Lights. They could turn it into a shopping center if they wanted to. There could be gas stations, there could be little private offices. It certainly won't be a park-like setting anymore, and it won't be a land-grant college, which was what AMU was when it was established and was passed to APU. So you've got renters there in endowment buildings. No promises about what's going to happen. We taxpayers are going to have to pay for all of the infrastructure. I don't think that's fair to the taxpayers of Anchorage. My taxes have increased substantially over the last few years, even though I don't get any more services than I used to get. I pretty much think my taxes have probably doubled in the last 30 years, and I think we get about the same amount of services we used to get. We even get to pay for trash, recycling trash, which of course, you can't recycle bottles. I mean, we're paying through the... It's getting to the point where Anchorage is becoming a city where nobody wants to retire because of taxes. If you burden the public with the cost of any of the water and sewer lines that APU requires without paying property taxes, you've made a mistake. I don't know what the enrollment was of APU. I don't think it's substantially more than it used to be. But the endowment's gone up and up. They've got that building on 36th that used to be the IRS building, and I don't know what it is now. Cargotstein gave them a lot of money. Don't destroy the environment of that park-like setting at Goose Lake. Don't let them build something through the wetlands that will destroy the character of that unique environment in the city of Anchorage. Don't let them do it. Don't let them fool you into believing because there's going to be a sports center on an extension of two-year road that they have to build new highways. You could make, for instance, I see people, the students crossing UAA Drive every day, I see traffic backed up to Northern Lights. And what is the answer to that? Make it a four-lane road. You know what the real answer is? Make the students use the overhead that we built for $500,000 20 years ago. Or have a light, every five minutes they can go across, they have 20 seconds, and the traffic won't back up to Northern Lights every day. Let's use common sense instead of using some engineer's idea of what would be ideal if you had all the money in the world.
Please summarize here. Please summarize.
Okay. I urge you to look realistically at this, to use your own common sense. Take a look at what these people are suggesting. Is it really necessary? When I was on the municipal traffic planning, if you pushed Bogota through, Providence Drive, which goes right in front of the hospital, became Class D, meaning the people coming off Bogota made that road totally unpassable. It would be gridlocked all day. That is not a good idea, and I urge you, again, rethink this, not let these people have the rezoning they want without limitations, which say they'll pay for the sewer and water, they'll pay for the development of the roads if any required to service it, and they will use it for academic purposes, not for gas stations, not for more endowment buildings, until they prove a need for that. Keep your hands on it. Don't let the money muckrackers get in charge of it. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, is there any questions for Mr. Maloney? Thank you for your testimony, sir. Is anybody else who wishes to testify? Please come forward, state your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Gunner Knapp. My last name is spelled K-N-A-P-P. I'm a resident of Wesleyan Drive. I've been APU's neighbor for the past 22 years or so. First of all, I'd like to thank APU for being a good neighbor. I've enjoyed the use of their lands and their trails for many years. I've been a loyal supporter of and contributor to the APU Nordic Ski Program, which is truly doing amazing things for United States Nordic skiing. I think they have a lovely campus. They have many events that serve this community well. So I appreciate APU as a neighbor and for what they do for this city. Secondly, I respect that this APU land is privately owned, and I respect the right of APU to use the land for their needs as they see fit. I hope that APU, UAA, and the city will work closely, will really make the effort, all three of them, to coordinate land use and trail planning as much as possible. These greenlands around Goose Lake, UAA, and APU are more than the sum of their parts. And if everybody does their own thing, we're going to end up with something that does less for all of us and is less good for the students of UAA, the students of APU, and the citizens of this city. Then if we can find a way to work imaginatively to keep these trail connections, make these green spaces work together, and if we all just sort of assert what's our right instead of think about how we can collectively be best off. I really hope that as we think about the use of these lands, we can come up with something that our grandchildren 50 years from now will thank us for having done. And that involves some cooperation and imagination on all parts. What gives me most concern as I look at this APU master plan is the development of the so-called endowment properties. And I understand and sympathize with APU's needs to develop property for endowment income. What I don't want, and what I don't support, is unrestricted development of lands for purely commercial purposes. Now, I admit that I don't fully understand what the history and zoning status of these lands is and what it does or doesn't give APU the right to do. So I'm going to admit that as a neighbor, I'm confused by this complex topic of what can be done with these lands and sort of what this master plan that you're discussing will or won't change in terms of what can happen. So I fully respect whatever rights APU has, but what I would urge you is don't relax what standards we have. Don't relax anything beyond what the law requires to allow more commercial development of those lands than APU currently has a right to. I'm not saying that this has happened or is proposed, but I am concerned that I've seen a number of buildings constructed on the APU campus over the past 10 years that seem to have a very marginal relationship to any apparent academic activity or mission. And finally, I'll leave you with the point that to the extent that commercial development does take place in this area, then I think it definitely should meet all commercial standards for parking and road access and the like. And I understand that students may have a lower use of cars, and that makes sense in an area that students are using to have, you know, sort of relaxed parking standards if there's going to be one parking lot that can serve various buildings. But if there are parts of these lands that are essentially a business park, then they shouldn't get special treatment simply because of the fact that they're owned by a university. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Knapp? Ms. Pease?
This is actually in response to Dr. Knapp's question, so it's kind of to staff or the petitioner. The endowment priority lands are described in our plan. It's described in our plan on page 35. These lands should be considered similar to the mixed-use/commercial land use category in the UMED district plan, and used to support a compact mixed of uses that supports the needs of the institution and the public. Can you provide a reference that we can actually look at and read, which explains the mixed-use/commercial land use category of the UMED district plan?
The mixed-use, so the land use designations in the UMED plan, there are six in total. And they include preservation open space, development reserve, redevelopment and development priority, institutional, residential, and mixed-use commercial. So what you referred to was a reference to the mixed-use commercial? Okay, so I have the UMED plan here, I can read that from the UMED plan. It says, "This classification includes all lands that are not classified as preservation open space, institutional, residential. The intent is that these lands should be developed with a compact mix of uses that collectively support the needs of the institutions and those who inhabit them. Office, institutions, homes, hotels and motels, entertainment and retail are all encouraged in the mixed-use commercial lands." Now, I just want to state, I believe that this category would have applied to other property in the UMED district that was not zoned PLI as well. So the zoning and the uses that are allowed in PLI are not going to be changed. So when this talks about entertainment, retail, hotels and motels, well, hotels, let's forget that, but entertainment and retail, those would not be allowed in PLI.
But under this plan, they will be. Those uses will be.
Can you tell me again what you're, where you're referring to out of the APU plan?
Well, the only cross-reference I found in the APU plan is on page 18, it describes mixed-use commercial. And you read that definition, and then you added a line or two extra that is not printed in the APU plan.
Right.
So that's a little bit more information. But I guess what I'm still concerned about is what is not allowed. And page 35 says that the endowment priority lands designation doesn't preclude accessory uses including snow disposal or other administrative support infrastructure. And I think it makes a big difference to the neighbors if it's a snow dump versus part of a, you know, retail office complex or something of that nature. So I'm just looking, since some of the parcels are pretty close to neighborhoods, I'm looking for what protections there would be. And I guess, so questions are, is there a list of prohibited uses? Or how do we find out for the information of ourselves and the neighbors what's not allowed? And then the second would be in response to Dr. Knapp's question, will roads and other infrastructure be required to be built to code for the use, not for, you know, with the parking and so forth that would normally be required of a commercial or a retail or entertainment use?
Through the chair, Commissioner Pease. I can read the permitted uses and conditional uses from the PLI district.
Or I'll put them up on the Elmo screen, then everybody could have a reference. That might be faster.
Is there a way to focus this thing? Maybe it's just better if I read it. I think it's better if I just read it.
Okay.
Okay. This is the list of permitted principal uses and structures in the PLI district. Parks, parkway, and green belts, public recreation facilities, including public golf courses, playgrounds, playfields, zoos, museums, libraries, historic cultural exhibits, educational institutions, cemeteries, police and fire stations, convents and monasteries, headquarters of administrative offices of charitable and other similar quasi-public organizations of a non-commercial nature, government office buildings, plaster mining operations, churches, childcare, ski towers, public greenhouse, housing for the elderly, social service facilities, antennas, temporary licensed commercial uses, adult care facilities with 16 or more persons, and high-voltage transmission towers. These are the list of permitted accessory uses. Crematoriums and mausoleums, uses that are necessary adjuncts to permitted principal uses, keeping of honeybees, antennas without structures, and large domestic animal facilities. uses, keeping of honeybees, antennas without structures, and large domestic animal facilities. Then there is a list of conditional uses. And conditional uses would require a public process, public hearing. Natural resource extraction, community interest and local interest towers, commercial recreation uses, vocational schools and trade schools, correctional institutions, habilitative care, government service shops, off-street parking spaces, landfills, animal control, heliports, airstrips or airports, utility and transportation facilities, large domestic animal facilities, motorized sports facilities, snow disposal sites, healthcare facilities with 16 or more persons, homeless and transient shelters, correctional community residential centers, dormitories, large residential care facilities, towers, high voltage transmission exceeding 70 feet, hotels, shooting range, public facility, a public safety facility. That is the list of conditional uses. Anything else would not be permitted.
If I can follow up to that, that's in code under PLI that didn't list entertainment and retail.
That's correct. That would, commercial uses, other types of commercial uses would not be permitted. The way our code is now, it doesn't totally make everything mutually exclusive, but if it's not listed as a permitted use or a conditional use, it's not a permitted use. And the zoning code would have to be amended to allow it. Here's the confusion for me. It says on page 35, "These lands should be considered similar to the mixed-use commercial land category in the UMED district plan." You read off that that included entertainment and retail. Then you said this is part of the PLI district and you read off a whole different set that didn't include entertainment and retail. So I'm not sure, I'm confused, what are the intended and permitted uses? If I was reviewing, if zoning was reviewing a building application, we would refer to the uses that are permitted in the PLI district. That sentence in this plan, I think more has to do with the compact nature rather than the use, than the uses that are described in the narrative that describes that classification in the UMED plan. You know, we could, if you found that conflicting, you could suggest a change to this master plan to clarify that.
Thank you.
Any further questions, Ms. Pease? Any further questions for Mr. Knapp? Thank you for your testimony, sir. Anybody else that wishes to testify? Please come forward and state your name for the record.
My main concern is that Anchorage is at a pivotal point, I think. I'm looking at the UMED district, I'm looking at big buildings going up and proposals for four-lane roads and road extensions. And if you fly over this area, it's a big green spot and it's surrounded by grids. And once you make it a grid, you can never go back. So I would look at whether it's really necessary, like Mr. Maloney was saying, when you whiz past Sullivan Arena every day, you don't even know it's there. When there's a hockey game, they direct traffic in such a way, traffic efficiently goes in, goes out, you don't need a new road. So I would be so careful not to start the grid. That's all I have to say.
Any questions for Ms. Anderson? Thank you, ma'am, for your testimony. Is there anybody else that wishes to testify? Please state your name for the record.
My name is Karen Parrish, P-A-R-R-I-S-H. And you have, I believe in your packets, a statement from Sue Delaney from the College Alps Condos Association. I'm the, she's our president, I'm the vice president of the association. And our property is, we have this handy map here. We're right there, along the edge of this property. And our concern is, I think what everybody has expressed here has been excellent and has brought out one major question we have is, why didn't we get more specific information on what was going on prior to what was posted this afternoon? The packets that were available, actually they're out of them now at the door. We haven't had enough time as a community, and we do represent 86 homeowners in the College Alps area, College Alps condos. And as a collective group, they have sent me tonight to ask that we postpone any kind of vote or action on this plan until all members of the community and the areas, the community councils that are directly associated with this area have an opportunity to carefully review these documents so that we can make an informed decision. And that's pretty much it.
Yeah, okay, fine. Question for Ms. Parrish, Nancy. Ms. Pease?
It's maybe answered by the staff as well. What sort of, was the public notice given properly? And how much time was allowed?
Public notice was sent on September 19th to properties within 600 feet. The property was noticed. And the public, the property was noticed, it was noticed through our online system and the mailing was sent.
Any further questions, Ms. Pease?
Yes. Has your condo association met at all to discuss this?
We've tried. And the issue is, is the, yes, we did get this mailing and everybody's, well, what is this about? And we went online and the only thing posted was a similar type of zoning request. It was also very vague from 2010 that was then, the request was pulled by APU. They basically canceled their request at that point. We've, various people in the community have called the office to try and get information. We have emailed, we've looked for more documentation. And it's essentially lack of knowledge on our part. What does this mean? Is APU trying to rezone all the property? And it's only been recently that we were able to determine that they were actually looking at changing the UMED framework, the UMED plan framework, which is a whole nother entity that I understand has to go before the assembly once it passes through this committee. Is that correct?
This will go forward to the assembly. That's correct.
Okay.
Did you find this plan online?
I did find it.
Document?
This afternoon.
And then through the chair, the staff, was it available online at the time that notice was sent?
Our process is we send the notice, and when we send the notice, what the public gets in the mail is a one or two-line description of what the case is. And that is because we have to send out the notice before the staff report is written. And so, in order to meet that 21 timeline. So the public is welcome to call, they're welcome to come by the office, and they're welcome, and for all calls, I have responded to all calls that I got. I have responded, on the online public comments, several people were making a comment that they didn't, they didn't understand. And I can understand when you get a two-sentence description, it is difficult. But our staff report is not posted until the time that we provide it to the commission and it is a signed-off document. And at that time, we provide our staff report. And that goes on the online cases program that people can get to through the planning department website.
And through the staff, was the master plan available online for people to look at, even if the staff hadn't prepared its analysis yet?
Not until the staff report was available.
And so that was about a week ago?
That was about a week ago, yes.
Through the chair, can we ask staff, how does that compare with the review of other projects? Is there typically some information available more than a week ahead of time?
There is not information available until the staff report is written online. Until, in, leading up to that time, it is, people either have to call or, and I'll explain to them over the phone. I often encourage people to come to the counter and open, and be able to look at the file. Sometimes I will email out some of the information if that works for them, but there's nothing posted online until the staff report is written.
Thank you.
Ms. Yoshimura?
Ms. Parrish, so if I understand correctly, you are a member, a vice president of the Homeowners Association?
Of College Alps, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And has the petitioner made any attempt to meet with your association?
They have not.
Okay. And do you know if, what community council is the College Alps a part of?
We're part of the University Area Community Council.
And do you know if the petitioner has had any contact with that organization as well?
There has been minimal contact. UACC, any folks here?
No presentation on the master plan to the university community council?
Not as far as I know. The council is in flux right now. We have just lost our, not lost, lost, our president has resigned. His term was up. There was a meeting this last Wednesday. We do have a vice president in place, but even still, it would have been just one week's worth of, one week to actually look at this proposal.
It is not unusual for a project plan of this magnitude and importance to the city for a petitioner or petitioner's representative to reach out to the adjacent homeowners association or the community council that is directly involved to make presentations and to get feedback from those that are going to be most impacted by the plan.
That's what has usually happened in the past. And we've, you know, this sort of came as a surprise and we didn't know the scope of what was happening, either within our association or within the University Area Community Council. And you may have seen some of the comments online asking that we have some time to really thoroughly look at what's going on with the framework, with APU's plan. And we know it will affect us, you know, in numerous ways. But we're all, as Dr. Knapp said, we're all part of a community and we need to work together on this. But no, we have not had any discussion with APU in this process. And the other thing is, you know, we've been before, this board before in both formally and informally, both here and at the planning office regarding a zoning change on a piece of property in the College Gate community. And that was a very transparent process. It was very clear, it was, this is what they plan to do, this is how they plan to do it. And the individual involved with that request did come to the Bryn Mawr condos, which are right next to us, College Alps condos, University Area Community Council, and discussed their plan with everyone and brought it to planning. And there was a great amount of, a great deal of dialogue involved in that, and everybody had the knowledge and the information at hand to really either support or oppose or to present arguments in either case. And we have not had that opportunity.
Any further questions for Ms. Parrish? Thank you for your testimony. Is there anybody else that wishes to testify? Is there anybody else that wishes to testify? Please state your name for the record.
My name is Valerie Truncailli, and I'm also on the board of College Alps Condo Association. And I do just feel like I haven't had enough time to really look at this, a lot of information and very detailed. And I am just very interested and concerned about the plans. And I really do feel like APU has been a good neighbor in the past, and I very much so enjoy using that space. And so I would just also say that I think there may not be enough time to make a decision right away on these amendments. So I would just say if it's possible to postpone, that would benefit the community around. So.
Okay. Could you spell your name so our secretary can get it down, please?
Yes, sorry.
Okay, any questions for Ms. Truncailli? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that wishes to testify?
Hi, my name is Susan Share, S-H-A-R-E. We are new residents on Goose Lake and haven't had a chance to connect with the community councils. And we also feel that we haven't had enough time to look at the plan and the reconnaissance report, which is detailed in like 80 pages and charts and maps. And then I wanted to clarify something. I think I heard you say that if this plan is approved for changing the status of APU's land use, it takes in the whole UMED area as a whole, the decision is made for the whole area? Because I think that it's such a huge project and impacts so much land and so many people, neighborhoods, that it's a bigger issue than having a report sent to people within 600 feet. Because we're at UAA Drive and Goose Lake Park, and everything that happens in the whole UMED area affects us too. Traffic, land use. And, you know, I've looked at the reconnaissance report and they're proposing various kinds of facilities right across the street from our area, which is a neighborhood, you know, of people who live there and try to get out of the street on a busy day. And we're very nervous about what'll happen to both the natural environment, the waterfall and moose that come through there. And, you know, to see this whole UMED plan as a gigantic development of the area, and it seems that, you know, almost every part of the UMED area is designated for development. And, you know, there are a lot of people who live in this area as well. So I'd like to see, you know, be able to discuss it more, join the university council and be able to understand more about what this plan is as a whole, the whole UMED area, and the impact it has on the land and the people who live there.
Ms. Share, is that all? Okay, any questions for Ms. Share? Thank you for your testimony, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any further testimony? Does anybody else wish to testify? Okay, please come forward and state your name for the record.
My name is Leslie Tuvenen, T as in Tom, U-O-V as in victory, I-N-E-N. I am a previous APU employee, a current UAA employee, and I live in College Gate and am purchasing my first home in College Gate. And I would just like to thank Gunnar Knapp for his remarks. I- And I would just like to thank Gunnar Knapp for his remarks. I agree with what he's had to say today, and I would also ask, lend my voice to those who are saying, please give us time to review this. This is not only a neighborhood issue, but it impacts the whole city, and especially those of us who live and work also in the UMed district. The community council for the UMed district, College Gate area, is usually very on the ball with sending out announcements, and I have the email here that we received from them. It is dated Saturday, October 8th. So the 67-page document that we picked up this evening and the other materials, we have not had a chance to review them. So please give us additional time. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Tuvenen? Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else wish to testify? Okay, Mr. Potter, I believe you've got, let's see. Wait, let me just. Mr. Potter, before you answer, we need to have a little conference up here amongst ourselves. So what I'd like to do is go into a committee of the whole, so we'll do this publicly, so people can hear what we're saying when we talk amongst ourselves, so there's no secrets. So I'll accept a motion for going into committee of the whole. This will move. Okay. Moved by Ms. Pease, seconded by Mr. Parks. Any objection? Okay, committee of the whole. I have a feeling you've got it.
Just for the purposes of the RAB's hearing.
Yes, yes, that's the reason. I think we may have a situation here where we've got a, yes, public notice was made, but it's such a huge document, I don't know if people have had time to digest the thing yet. And so there may be something to consider there.
So is the goal here to continue the public hearing, so that we can hear from more, that perhaps the community council, other homeowners associations? Or is the goal simply to close the public hearing and then move?
No, no, I don't want to close, I don't think we want to close the public hearing, but that's up to you guys, and I, we need to just get some feedback, so when we go back into regular session, we can decide what we want to do.
Well, you know, I think that we really do need to give additional time. While there was notice, and the, I might say the official rules were followed, but that's not sufficient in something of this nature. This is a very large issue. It affects the neighborhood, it affects the regional area. You know, when you hear so many individuals and groups saying they didn't have enough time, that causes me concern, because we do rely upon the public a lot in terms of these reviews. And I don't think we've, they've had enough time to actually give us their, in fact, their input. And I would feel that would be premature for us to make a decision this evening. I recommend that we continue the public hearing.
Anybody else have any input? Okay, Ms. Pease.
In addition to continuing the public hearing, which I think is merited, I think it would be helpful if the public had a little more information on the flavors of development, and how this plan does or doesn't change what's currently permitted on these lands. Because there's a really long list of lands, uses permitted in the PLI, but there's some indication in this plan, in the section 3.2.1 land use categories, that certain uses will be preferred or predisposed in certain areas. If that's not a binding commitment, if all PLI uses are still allowed on all these lands, that's something that the public might want to consider. Some of those uses we heard about, shooting range, snow dump, mausoleum cemetery, might not be appropriate right up against College Alps. And so a little more clarity, I think, on what these land use designations allow and don't allow is important. And specifically, with the endowment priority lands, we heard from staff that commercial and entertainment, commercial, retail, and entertainment were likely in the endowment priority lands, and those didn't appear to be in the PLI list. So that needs to be clarified. So additional clarity as to what these designations mean. And then also, I think the staff should clarify for the public that reviewing this plan does not include reviewing the north access issues or access issues to the future stadium. This is just APU land.
Mr. Parks.
I too think that we ought to continue this public hearing until all the people get a chance to be heard.
Ms. Dean.
I'm worried about the trend that we're heading down. This is the second case that's large that we've put off because people said they didn't have enough time to digest. I'm just, I'm really concerned about that. I don't know if the public process needs to be different for bigger cases than our standard cases, that we look at a plan and have more time, and that maybe we need to adjust how they're done. What do you guys think? Do you think that that, maybe we need to make an adjustment in how the process goes?
Well, you know, I think that, you know, coming from my perspective, which is state perspective, there's a uniform requirement, the public needs to know 30 days in advance of a decision, they have to know what the decision is. And we're not getting sufficient public notice out there to the public on especially significant issues. It might be one thing on a rezoning from residential to commercial, it's pretty straightforward, but on these master plans, this is complex stuff, it takes time to digest. I mean, I've got lots of questions too, and I've got some knowledge of this field. I mean, the public's going to have a lot more to go through, quite frankly. It's just not possible for the public to go through something of this significance in a, you know, a week. And the other thing to consider is that you've got these community councils and other organizations, they have different times they meet, and sometimes 10 days is just not going to fit their calendar.
Mr. Wilson.
I think that, I'd like to hear more about the road planning process too, from the people that are involved in that.
Okay, Ms. Yoshimura.
Well, Ms. Dean, I can understand your frustration, and I in part share it, but I think what's happening is that perhaps these cases are coming to us a little bit prematurely. I think it is the responsibility of staff and the petitioner to have an understanding that they need to go to the community council. And it's a voluntary thing, it's not a mandatory thing, but when there are also, you know, condominium associations that are nearby, and we're going to hear a case later tonight that we postponed, because there hadn't been that interface with the adjacent neighbors. And I think one of the things that we can do is state pretty clearly that when these cases come before us at planning and zoning, that there needs to have been that community interface, as opposed, and I think we're sending a signal by sending it back and saying, there needs to be that. And in addition, I agree with Commissioner Phelps that, you know, there isn't enough time with 10 days' notice for a plan as complicated as this, that has the impact that this plan will have. There needs to be more opportunity to digest it.
Ms. Pease.
Yes, if the standard is 21-day notice, and all the notice is, is action ahead, call the staff, and have a conversation, that's really not notice enough. I think our 21-day notice should be notice in which the materials are ready, the analysis is ready, and the public can understand, not just, not just put it on their calendar, but start understanding the project. That would serve the public better.
I think everybody's spoken except for me. If we do continue this case, number one, I don't want to have the petitioner use up their time tonight doing any rebuttal, and anybody that has spoken tonight will not be eligible to speak the next time. So you're going to have, if we decide that we're going to continue this thing, you're going to have to get your friends and neighbors to come in and speak your words, because I, you can only testify once in a case. So I think we've all, I think we have a general feel for what we want to do, so we need a motion to go back into regular session. Moved by Ms. Pease, seconded by Ms. Yoshimura. Any discussion? Any objection? Okay, we're back in regular session. I need a motion. Moved by Ms. Yoshimura, seconded by Ms. Pease. Ms. Yoshimura, please state your motion.
Thank you. In the case of 2010-100 and 2011-108, I move for a postponement until the petitioner is available to come back.
Okay, it's been seconded by Ms. Pease. Ms. Pease?
Was that to include a continuation of the public hearing?
Not a postponement, I apologize. It's a continuation. I move to continue.
Okay, so that's been seconded by Ms. Pease.
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Dean.
I'm not going to support the motion. I hate to see the petitioner be drug through again. We've done this on a clout now, we have changed the public process. We need to have a different process go through and change the city ordinance of how a master plan is handled, and instead of doing it this way through the back door, we need to have it done at a more official level. I disagree at this point to do this to the petitioner.
Any further comments? Ms. Pease.
We're here to hold a public hearing, so our purpose is to make sure that the public has a chance to review the project and have concerns raised and addressed, and we simply can't do that if the public has not had adequate time to look at the plan. This is a major plan for 100s, over 100 acres in the heart of Anchorage. The staff analysis packet was, you know, well over 100, 200 pages, and it's not realistic that the average citizen or citizens group can digest that and understand that in about a week's time. So the 21-day notice, really, in terms of availability of the material, could be more correctly phrased, is about a seven to 10-day availability or access to the information. And again, if we're here to listen to the public, and the public didn't have time to understand the project, we aren't able to do our job unless we continue the public hearing.
Mr. Phelps.
Yeah, I just think that Ms. Dean has the point, that in fact, maybe we do need to take a look at our rules and have a discussion on this item with the Planning Director.
Any further discussion? Okay, a motion has been made and seconded that we can continue the public hearing until, and it's to a date not certain. We'll discuss that more with staff. Are we ready to vote? Since there is objection, we'll have to use our machines. A yes vote continues the public hearing. No vote puts us back. That passes. Public hearing is continued. Go ahead and stand down here for about five minutes, and then we'll come back and start on case G3, 2011-070.
Mr. Chairman, may I have 10 seconds? Just for clarity's sake, I understand everybody's concern about what a big plan it is and everything else. We've been working on this at the direction of the Assembly for four years. The master plan is our deal, the modification to the UMed plan is really the city's deal, the staff's deal. To have a suggestion that we, APU, did not go out over any of this time and talk to the community council is a little insulting, and to suggest, and I'm sorry, Ms. Dean, that there's a backdoor approach, that's insulting, and you probably didn't mean it that way. If you would have asked, it would have been nice to have had a chance to discuss what we have done with the community council and what we have not. We will abide by your direction, we'll reach out as much as we can, the public has a responsibility to reach out as well, and yes, we did go to UACC, and in fact, we even met when they weren't in session with their executive committee in June, because we thought this was going to be here even sooner. Barbara Garner is here, she was at that meeting at Colati Brothers out off of Tudor, and it's frustrating to not be able to respond to the commission when you jump to conclusions.
Okay, we've got five minutes. Okay, I'm calling the meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission of October 10th, 2011, back to order. We'll move on to case number 2011-070, Lighthouse Christian Fellowship Church, zoning conditional use for off-street parking. If we could hear the staff report, please.
This is a conditional use, as you mentioned, for off-street parking. It was originally scheduled for a September public hearing, but was postponed at the request of the commission for additional information, which has been supplied by the petitioner's representative.
Could you speak more into the mic, please?
It's right up my mouth. This petition site is comprised of three lots containing 1.65 acres. It's located on the north side of West Diamond Boulevard and the east side of Vern Place. The property is Zoned R5, and this off-street parking will support a church to be constructed on Lot 4A that adjoins the east petition site boundary. The petition site is located in close proximity to a neighborhood commercial center. Commercial uses are located to the south and to the west of the petition site. A church is an integral part of a neighborhood, and the church use and associated parking is compatible with the commercial uses in the immediately surrounding area. Part of the requested additional information included, information on the total number of 171 parking spaces are required. 200 spaces are being provided, of which 136 of those parking spaces will be provided within the boundaries of the petition area, those three lots. The excess parking can be used for snow storage, which is identified on a revised site plan, or to provide extra parking spaces when needed for special events that are held at the church. The chart on page five does outline the uses and the required number of parking spaces, which was provided by the applicant subsequent to, in response to the commission's request. The overall site plan for both the church and the parking area on page 16, and it should be noted, the church is not part of this conditional use. The church is located on a lot that is Zoned B3, which is allowed out, a permitted use outright in the B3 zoning district. But the overall site plan does show, in response to a request for information on connectivity, does show the connectivity from the driveway access from West Diamond Boulevard that goes around the church to the east, and then swings over and connects to Vern Place. There are, there is one driveway access off of West Diamond, and there are two driveway access points off of Vern Place. They will access the parking that is on those three lots, that is the subject of the conditional use. There's a small parking area on the actual church site, Lot 4A, and the required six accessible spaces are located on the south face of the church, adjacent to a sidewalk. It provides the shortest walking route to obtain access to the church. It provides the shortest walking route to obtain access to the church. So, the accessible parking spaces are put in the most convenient place for those needing an accessible parking space. There is, there was a question about the traffic impact analysis subsequent to the hearing that was started in September. It was determined that a TIA was required. The petitioner's representatives have met with both Municipal Traffic Department and ADOT to determine the scope of the study. The study is currently underway. It is not yet finalized, and it is not approved, but it will have, will be required to be approved before any building permit can be issued. Any road improvements that are required from the approved TIA will become part of the requirements placed on the building permit. Condition 7 on page 14 states that a conditional, this conditional use is subject to approval of the traffic impact analysis, and that is any road requirements. There was a question about improvement to West 90th Avenue. The TIA has not been finalized, so it has not yet been determined whether improvements will be required by the municipality or ADOT, but likely it would be the municipality that would be most concerned. ADOT would be most concerned with the driveway access to West Diamond and the impact on the West Diamond traffic. The church services are generally held on Sunday, and traffic is rather light compared to Monday through Friday on a Sunday, and it's not necessarily anticipated that it will be a real imposition generated by the church traffic, the traffic flow on West Diamond. The fire department does require two entrance/exit points. There are three are being provided, one from West Diamond, as mentioned, and two from Vern Place. As far as the drainage, there was concerns about having an approved drainage plan. Private Development, in their comments, did advise the petitioner of the requirement to coordinate submission of a drainage analysis and calculations to Private Development under a building permit. Final plans with appropriate details will be required prior to approval of the building permit. Any improvements to Vern Place for drainage improvements or improvements to Vern Place right-of-way will be determined both through the TIA and also through the drainage plan in terms of, there is not a piped storm drain system, so it's via drainage ditches, and the drainage analysis will determine whether there will have to be any improvements to those drainage ditches to accommodate the calculated drainage runoff from this site. Based on the additional information presented by the department, I did want to clarify that this is not a phased development. I wanted to clarify that the condition, the church seeks to construct on Lot 4A. It cannot provide all the required parking on Lot 4A. Therefore, it needs to provide parking on the three lots that are part of the petition site. It's not a phased development. The parking on the petition area will not occur prior to the, or independent of the construction of the church. They will be done together under one single building permit. There was a question about that that staff received, and I just wanted to clarify that point, that it's not a phased development, and they cannot, the petitioner cannot obtain a building permit until they can show that they can provide all the required parking. To be able to show that, they need to, they submitted this conditional use to seek permission to provide an off-street parking on the petition site so they can move forward with their plans for the building permit, finalizing the drainage plan and the TIA. So, based on the information, the new information received and the response from the petitioner's representative, the department does recommend approval of the conditional use for off-street parking on Lots 16, 17, and 18, Bruce subdivision addition number two, subject to seven conditions that are printed on pages 13 and 14 of the packet. Thank you.
Any questions for staff? Ms. Yoshimura?
Thank you, Ms. O'Brien. I do have a couple of questions. I'm a little confused about the overflow parking, because it says on page 10, "The overflow parking spaces will be used for snow storage during the winter months," and it's overflow parking for large services. But the overflow parking, as I understand it, is the off-street parking? Or am I confused?
Through the chair, through the chair, Ms. Yoshimura, there are 171 spaces required.
Right.
200 are being provided, both, that includes the parking on the church site as well as these three lots. So, there's a surplus or an excess of 36 excess parking spaces. So, they've, they've shown that they can meet the required parking spaces, that they do have room to provide snow storage. So, the excess parking can be used for snow storage until it's, if it's removed.
Right.
And then, if there are large events at a church, they wouldn't impact adjacent streets because they would have additional parking to accommodate parking that might go above and beyond the required if there are special events at the church from time to time.
Okay. And then, I just have one other question. Is it common for a conditional use to be granted prior to knowing whether or not there needs to be an off, an off-site improvement, such as to Vern Street?
Through the chair, Ms. Yoshimura, yes. Conditional uses, I've seen in the past, they are, they are approved subject to an approved drainage analysis, subject to an approved TIA.
Okay.
And that's largely because the, it's a matter of timing for the petitioner, that they need to know whether they're going to be granted off-street parking so that they can proceed with their final design, their drainage analysis. They've already started, started on the TIA and the drainage analysis, but so that they can get those flowing in a reasonable manner. They come together at a certain time, and they can't do anything until they have an approved TIA. They will not get a building permit until they have an approved TIA and an approved drainage plan.
I have just one other question. Is, are, is the Lot 4 and the other three lots all in common ownership, or is this a leased land situation? I'm just curious. It's not, it's not germane to a conditional use, but.
Through the chair, Ms. Yoshimura, all four lots are in common ownership, the lot upon which the church will be constructed and the three lots used for off-street parking.
And I may have asked this question in the past when this was before us, but is there any plan to erase the lot lines to make this all one track?
Through the chair, I did ask that of the petitioner, and they are choosing not to replat the property.
Okay.
They prefer to go forward with the property and its current configuration. There's no structure. There's required, interior required yard setbacks. There's no structure, so that's not going to present a problem for them.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Phelps?
Question, a clarification. Why are we seeing this as a conditional use? Is it simply that this off-street parking in the R5 zone is a conditional use?
Through the chair, Mr. Phelps, that's correct. The parking associated with the church on Lot 4A is permitted because, a church is permitted outright in the B3 district.
So, is it because that, well, I guess I don't understand, because typically, you don't see a conditional use for parking associated with a principal structure.
Through the chair, Mr. Phelps, it's not all one track, and the three lots are zoned R5, and the R5 zoning district, off-street parking is a conditional use, so that's why it's required.
Thank you. Ms. P.
Yes, through the chair, thank you to staff for responding to my written questions. It shortens them considerably. Staff did respond to me in asking about whether, the sequence of the CU conditional use approval versus the traffic impact analysis, that it would be fine to add to condition 7, that the road improvements, any road improvements required by the TIA would be part of the conditional approval, and the same could be said for the drainage plan, which isn't mentioned as a condition. So, I'll just throw those out there in case the petitioner wants to comment on that idea.
Any further questions for staff? Okay, we'll move into the public hearing, and let me read the rules before we kick After the staff presentation is complete, I'll ask for public testimony on the issue. Persons who wish to testify will follow the time limits established by our rules, and in this case, it's the petitioner has 10 minutes. Representatives of groups such as a community council or BTAs have five minutes, and individuals have three minutes. When your testimony is complete, you may be asked questions. You may only testify once on any issue unless you're questioned by the commission. Individual may have appeal rights relating to any action the Planning and Zoning Commission takes. Appeals must be filed with the clerk's office within 20 days after the Planning and Zoning Commission's final decision. And finally, any individual may request written findings from any commission decision within seven days. So, we're prepared for the petitioner's 10 minutes. And do you wish to retain any time for rebuttal?
Yes, I don't, I don't think I'll take 10 minutes right up front here, but my name is Brad Oster. I'm the project manager. My last name is spelled O-A-S-T-E-R, and I'm the project manager and the lead designer for the church. With me, I've got Melissa Branch. She's with Enterprise Engineering. Also, Jason Harwell is the church's owner's representative, and Mr. James McCoy is on staff with the church, so he's here also should we need them for questions. Really, what I wanted to do is just simply thank Ms. O'Brien for the help that she gave us in our meeting back in July and for better preparing for today. At the request of Ms. P., we were able to go back and look at quite a few items that we didn't have in July. July, we were kind of focused on those main three lots and just the use permit, but at your suggestion and having delayed this now till October, we were able to bring back kind of the whole picture. You know, how does the church sit on the property? Where's the handicap parking? So, you can have a better picture of how that property relates to the three that we're looking for the conditional use permit. So, having had that extra time, I think we have a much more thorough packet for you. If you have any questions for me, obviously, I'm here to answer questions, but I just, again, I want to thank you for allowing us to come and express to you that on our part, we're very excited about working with this church. We've worked with a lot of churches around the country, and Lighthouse, in my opinion, is a rather unique ministry. A lot of churches that we develop, you know, they build these beautiful facilities, and they're busy on Sunday, and then they just kind of sit, you know, all week long. It's the, kind of the heart and the DNA of Lighthouse to be more of a community center, if you want to call it that, or a center that really reaches out to the community and helps the community in ways that I think churches are supposed to. In fact, just this last weekend, they had a program at the church where they helped over 50 people, and these are, these are widows, these are single moms, these are people who just don't have the financial capabilities of caring for their cars. They put out a message that they would help put snow tires on cars and help do oil changes and things like that. They had 50 cars, 50 owners show up, and they literally spent from 6:00 in the morning to 6:30 at night at absolutely no cost, helping these folks to maintain their cars, whereas otherwise, they wouldn't be able to. And I think that's just one example of the many ministries that Lighthouse Christian Fellowship offers to the community. And so, this is going to be a real blessing to the Anchorage community. I'm excited to be a part of this project, and we want to make sure that we do this in a way that it's a real benefit to everybody. Just as we took a break just moments ago, I spoke to a couple in the, in the audience, and I hope they'll come up and speak here in a little bit, but they live, if you go down Vern and you kind of wrap around the church back in, back in this area, back here, a concern that they had, I think which will be addressed by the TIA, is traffic on Vern. You know, what is that going to look like? And how can we keep people on Sunday and during the week from pulling out of the church parking lot and going north on Vern, because it's a dead end back there? So, they don't want to have a bunch of cars coming back into the neighborhood just to turn around and then try and find their way out. So, a suggestion that they made, which I think would be a great suggestion, I maybe even add it to, or maybe it's number eight in our conditions, you know, some kind of signage that would show people as they exit from the church to go south on Vern, because if you go north on Vern, you're just going to turn around in their front yard and come back anyway. So, we want to be able to work with the community, with the neighbors, make sure this is a project we can all be proud of. Okay? That's, that's what I've got.
Okay, fine. You've got about 6 minutes and 55 seconds for rebuttal. Are there any questions for Mr. Oster? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody wish to testify? Please state your name for the record.
My name is Melissa Allsup, A-L-L-S-U-P. My husband and I are the homeowners that Mr. Overstreet talked about, Oster talked about. We live on Wakefield Circle. We are the only home down there. We also own property on Della, which is the street that you would turn off of from Vernie. And my husband's parents have lived on Wakefield Circle since 1967. They passed away, and then we bought the property, and we now live there with our children. And we knew that that street was called Vernie, so for you all to say it as Vern is like, what are they talking about? But anyway, that, he already expressed our concern. We realize that we have a very special piece of Anchorage where we live. We're surrounded by the Green Belt. Our only, you know, close neighbors are Moose, and we like it that way. We are just concerned about the traffic that potentially could come down. The only way they can go is follow the road all the way down to our cul-de-sac, turn around in the cul-de-sac, and then have to drive all the way back out. That's a lot. That's, we're talking about a big amount of people on Sunday. That would be a lot of traffic driving down there potentially. So, that was our only concern, was that there would be some sort of a sign put up that there's no outlet down there. And otherwise, improvements to Vernie would be wonderful, and especially on, if they have to make any improvements on 90th, that, that would just be great for us. That's all.
Okay, is there any questions for Ms. Allsup? And the name of that street is Vern or Vernon or what?
We call it Vernie.
Well, what's the real name?
I don't know.
Okay, Vernie, okay. Thank you. All right, any further questions? Thank you for your testimony. Anybody else wish to testify? Anybody else wish to testify? Okay, Mr. Oster, you're back up. You've got, I think, six minutes and something for rebuttal.
Well, considering the previous case, one person testifies, quite a relief. The only thing I'd like to say is from now on, I will call it Vernie.
Vernon?
Vernie.
Vernie, okay.
I don't know if that's correct or not, but she's been there a lot longer than I have, so I'm going to go with what she said.
Okay, any, any questions? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
I'm going to close. Oops, Ms. P., go ahead, Ms. P.
I was a little slow there, sorry. I did have one question.
Okay, go ahead.
For Mr. Oster.
For Mr. Oster. Sometimes with conditional uses, we put a time of expiration on it in case the project doesn't get going. But can you quickly tell us how much momentum you have behind your project and?
Sure.
Thank you.
I think we have a lot of momentum. It's the intent of the church to move right ahead with this project. We bought the property about four years ago. We did a fundraising campaign in order to pay some of that debt down so that we'd be better, in a better financial position now to raise money and to borrow money that we need to construct the facility. So, you know, our initial plan when we were back here in July was to hopefully have a grading permit and try and get our grading done before the ground freezes. I don't know a whole lot about, you know, the ground freeze and winter freeze. I'm from Colorado. We get cold, but we don't get Alaska cold there. So I know we're about out of time this year. So our intent would be get the grading issues designed, get the building permitted, start as soon as the ground thaws, start grading and construct the building. So we're, I wouldn't say it's a fast track, but we are moving right along with the development and we anticipate that we would have shovel in the ground next year.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. The matter rests with the commission. Been moved by Ms. Pease, seconded by Mr. Phelps. Ms. Pease, will you please state your motion?
In the matter of 2011-070, the conditional use for parking, I move for approval with the department recommendations listed on 13, pages 13 and 14 of our staff packet with the following changes. On condition seven, which reads, "This conditional use is subject to approval of the traffic impact analysis," add, "and any road improvements required by the TIA." And then a similar statement as a new condition eight. This conditional use is subject to approval of the drainage plan and any improvements required by that plan.
Mr. Phelps, as a secondary, is that okay with you?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, you want to speak to your motion, Ms. Pease?
Yes. I want to thank the petitioner for coming back with the information we requested in full detail. I think we now understand how the traffic circulation will be accommodated on these parcels relative to the principal use on the adjoining parcel. And our concerns about potential upgrades necessary to Vernie Place, which staff says is a rural road at this point, will be addressed, as well as the potential for, and need to direct traffic down West 90th and the potential impacts at the stoplight at Angela Place. The conditional use requirements of code are met in that the impacts to the surrounding properties are not, the adverse impacts are not significant. I'm looking for the code reference. Under AM 21, can you help me out, staff? The conditional use standards. The dimensions of the property, the landscaping and parking requirements are all met. The drainage will be met through the approval of a drainage plan and the transportation will be studied and any improvements will be met following a TIA. So I'll be supporting this project and again, thank the petitioner for coming back with the requested information to clarify it for us.
Ms. Yoshimura?
I have a very minor friendly amendment.
We'll have to treat that as a motion. Yes, a separate item. We don't want to get into these friendly amendment things. It gets confusing. However, you can make that, that motion now and then it would be added and then we would vote on the whole thing.
Okay. My motion would be to add signage to indicate churchgoers should turn left when exiting the parking lot.
Is there a second? Been seconded by Ms. Pease. Any discussion?
The petitioner's already acknowledged that they would be willing to do that, so this is just an affirmation of that.
Okay, any further discussion? Any objection? Okay, that is added. So now we have a, I guess, condition nine now, right? Okay. Right, is there any, any further additions or comments? Okay, is there any objection? That passes. Okay, we'll move on to case number 2011-073, Acclutna Inc., site plan review for PLI Public Lands and Institution District. Staff, we're prepared for your report.
Thank you. On July 11th, 2011, the Planning and Zoning Commission heard this case. This case is a request for a public hearing site plan review of a master development plan for the subject property. Approval of this master development plan will effectuate the rezone of the property to B3SL. At that meeting, the commission made a motion to postpone the case to such time that Acclutna had made a presentation to both the community council and the adjacent homeowners association in Eagle River with regard to this project. The motion included reopening the public hearing and renoticing according to municipal code. Since that time, Acclutna has met with the Fire Eagle Condominium Association and the Eagle River Community Council. Letter of support is included in the packet and also laid on the table was a resolution from the community council in support. Just to, at a very high level, based from the staff report, we found that this request met all the special limitation and effective clauses from the SLS and it was also complied with the standards of 2115030 for a site plan and met the elements of the 2006 Chugiak Eagle River Comprehensive Plan Update. The department recommends approval of the master development plan, subject to the conditions on page three and four of the staff report.
Okay, is there questions for staff? Okay, well, we'll move into the public hearing. In this particular case, the petitioner will have 15, or I'm sorry, 10 minutes. Representatives of groups will have five minutes, individual will have three minutes and the same guidance that I provided on the previous case applies. So let's go ahead and move right out.
Good evening. I'm Michelle Ritter with Dow HKM. As Ms. Iverson noted, we were here July 11th to present the master plan. This is the Acclutna Plaza master plan. The site is located just west of the Glen Highway, east of the Old Glen and to the north of the North Eagle River Access Exchange and to the south of the Eagle River condos. The site would, the site was previously owned by the state and it was zoned PLI. During the Native Claims Act, it was transferred to Acclutna. While it was under state ownership, it was zoned PLI and so B3, in 1996, it was rezoned to B3, which is more suited for Acclutna. The ordinance did specify that both a master plan and a traffic impact analysis needed to be approved before the zoning would be effectuated. So we have approved traffic impact analysis and that's why we're before you with the master plan to have it approved. This would, the site is restricted by steep slopes and wetlands and a flood plain, so a lot of the site development is dependent on how much parking we can get on the site. So the TIA was approved for about 120,000 square feet of development. However, most likely, it'll be around 90,000 square feet. You do see three options and that's, these options are dependent on the grade. There's one full fill grade option and then two partial fills. So the main differences are the sloping of the site. They have different tiered parking and in those two site plans, there would maybe be daylight parking and that's how we would get to the maximum 120,000 square feet. The site, though, would be restricted to 45 feet in height of development. So on July 11th, we were asked to postpone until we had gone to the Eagle River Community Council and the homeowners association for Fire Eagle. We did go to both organizations. The Fire Eagle Community, I'm sorry, condo association did have a few concerns that we were able to discuss at that meeting. One was the location of the fence. And if I can step away from the microphone.
This red line that separates the site, the Acclutna Plaza site and the Fire Eagle condominiums, that represents a fence and that fence was placed there as part of the ordinance that effect, or that was for the reason for this property to go to B3. Not because we necessarily wanted it to go through the wetlands and kind of right up against the neighboring property. So they have requested that, the Eagle River, I'm sorry, the Fire Eagle condo association has requested that we either move the fence inward of the required 30-foot buffer, which is also wetlands, or just remove the fence entirely. Another concern was the trail connection that was suggested from the site to the Glen Highway. They would actually prefer that there not be a connection due to safety. They would kind of like the site to be separate than the condominiums so that people don't from, coming to work on the site, don't go into the condominium association and on the converse that they don't, from the, the kids from the condos don't come in and skateboard and kind of use the site after hours. They were also concerned about the traffic plan during the construction of the Acclutna Plaza. So Acclutna has also responded to the association that they will work with them during the construction of the site to work out a traffic plan, whether it be restricting the development to certain hours, certain days, and how they'll reroute traffic and bus stops. Otherwise, the Fire Eagle Association did support the project. The Eagle River Community Council also approved the project unanimously. And so with that, we wanted to give you that update and are open to any questions.
Ms. Yoshimura?
Could you address the drainage issues in the northeast corner a little bit for us for further clarification from the packet?
And I guess I'm not sure what's drainage issues? The sediment?
Isn't there a drainage issue in the northeast corner of the property? I'm assuming it's, no, up by the Glen, yeah.
I don't know that there's a drainage issue. There's a sedimentation pond. Are you referring to the association's concern about their being?
Right.
They were concerned that by asphalting more of the site, that we would be contributing to more runoff. It was addressed that, I mean, MOA's standards actually require us to not put out more input or more stormwater than currently exists today. So we would have to mitigate any drainage before it went onto their property. And, but we will be draining towards that sedimentation pond. Then it will meter out underneath the Old Glen Highway and then meter out to the creek.
There'll be a pond there, is that?
Well, there already is an existing pond. And there is a shared drainage agreement between the homeowners association and Acclutna. And as well, prior to development, Acclutna will have to do a final grading plan and drainage plan for the entire site that will address any concerns.
Okay, Ms. Pease?
Yes, through the Chair. In the letter, the Fire Eagle condo homeowners associations, they would prefer no fence. Was, is your petitioner in agreement that that is okay for their privacy needs and was that conveyed to the staff because it didn't appear as a new condition?
It was, I mean, we did alert staff to that, not only in telephone call, but also through the, providing them with the letters from the homeowners association that stated that.
Okay, thank you. And then with?
And to, I'm sorry, to answer your second question, I, the property owner would be fine with either eliminating the fence. There is going to be a 30-foot buffer. It's very vegetated and like I said, it's a wetland. It's not really conducive to people kind of walking through it.
Okay, all right. Thank you. And the condo association had concerns about through traffic. I didn't see anything on their letter, so I guess that wasn't a continuing concern?
They weren't concerned about the through trafficking. They were more concerned about the traffic impacts during the construction of the site.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions for Ms. Ritter? Okay, you've got five minutes and 18 seconds for rebuttal.
Okay.
Okay, is there anybody that wishes to testify? Is there anybody hiding behind the easels here that I can't see that wishes to testify? Is there anybody that wishes to testify? Okay, Ms. Ritter, you're back on stage. You've got five minutes and 18 seconds.
Just thank you guys for the opportunity to come back and like the previous group said, you know, we appreciate the extra time and to go out to the community councils. It made a better project to kind of find out what their wants were, so I think it ended up for the better. So we appreciate your time again. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, in closing the public hearing, the matter rests with the commission. Need a motion, positive motion to approve. Been moved by Ms. Pease, seconded by Mr. Parks. Ms. Pease, would you speak to your motion, please?
In the matter of case 2011-073, public hearing site plan review, I move for approval with the staff's recommended conditions of approval on pages three and four of our staff packet with one change, which would be condition nine, which would delete the requirement for a six-foot-high fence along the north boundary of the property as shown on the bubble diagram.
Does that change, okay with you, Mr. Parks? Okay, Ms. Pease, want to speak to your motion?
The petitioner deserves thanks for going to the condo association and the community council and showing the project and that little bit of extra legwork has apparently been successful because there is no longer any, any objection. They've resolved the issues needed. The petitioner has met the requirements in terms of buffering and access. On-site drainage, as we heard from Ms. Ritter, has been resolved, or the concerns about on-site drainage have been resolved. And the neighbors' concern about an unnecessary fence has been added to the conditions of approval. The site is fairly visible, there is good screening from both the highway and the neighboring condo association, so this project is, appears to be a good step forward for the community and, in compatible or in keeping with the requirements for site plan review.
Any other comments? Any objection? That passes unanimously. Okay, we'll move on to case 2011-103, Matanuska Electric Association, Site Plan Review for a Power Station. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Is this, is this okay?
Yeah, got you, got you, loud and clear.
Okay. As you mentioned, this is a conditional use request for construction of a power generation state, station. MEA currently purchases power from CEA and the contract with CEA expires December 13th, The utility, Matanuska Electric, did evaluate alternative power purchases and determined that, that the best option would be for local power generation as the preferable alternative for the MEA power supply. MEA does propose to construct up to three gas-fired generation units on the property. Preparation for this construction, for this project, has been ongoing for a number of years, starting with the acquisition of the property from Akutina Inc. A rezone of the property from residential and transition zoning districts to I-2 with special limitations was approved in 2009. The special limitations are outlined on pages three and four of the packet. A final plat for the tracks, one and two, MEA-Akutina Generation subdivision, which was one of the special limitations, containing 107 acres, was recorded in 2009. The power station will be located on tract one of the subdivision, which contains 70 acres, and of those 70 acres, approximately 30 acres will be occupied by the power plant. The property is located south of the Glen Highway and the Alaska Railroad, right of way near the Akutina Lake Road exit. The site is heavily forested with a mix of birch, spruce, and undergrowth. The proposed power station conforms to the 2006 update to the Chugiak Eagle River Comprehensive Plan. A noise study was conducted in 2008, which indicates that the development will comply with the Anchorage Noise Control Ordinance. Also, an ambient air monitoring station was installed in 2010. The testing for the ambient air is undertaken for a year, is ongoing for a year, and a permit for a minor air permit was submitted to the Alaska Department of Environmental Conservation, which approved the data that they received from MEA from the air sampling in 2011. The, the proposed power generation station conforms to the I-2 district regulations and it does comply with the special limitations as noted on page 10 of the packet. The use is limited to a gas-fired electrical generation power plant and that complies. Any development of the site generating greater than an overall average daily trips, trip rate of 60 shall require access and related improvement review. There will be, within a 24-hour period, because the, the power plant will be running 24 hours, 17 employees. That would not necessarily generate 60 average daily trips. There is only, on intermittent occurrence every three to four years, a major overhaul needs to be done of the power plant equipment. And at that time, there would be possibly 20 to 50, depending on the needs of the overhaul, working on that, that project every three to four years. And it's likely many of those technicians and specialists will be bused to the site rather than drive their own, their rental vehicles or their own cars. The applicant has designed signage that they intend to install with the development of the property. That requires notification that the buffers required by the special limitations of, let's see, 100 feet along the north and eastern most site boundaries and 250 feet along the west boundary and 50 feet along the southern boundary, which do allow breaks for, in the buffers for access road transmission lines and a fence. There is signage required that these buffers are not to be disturbed, there shall be no storage or removal of vegetation within those required buffers. And those signs have been designed and they are proposed to be installed with the development of the power plant. And this public hearing site plan review is a requirement of the special limitation and the final plat, as mentioned, was, was recorded in 2009 for the site. In reviewing the conditional use requirements, pedestrian access is not desirable and is not being provided for, to the power plant. It is going to be entirely fenced, the area in which the power plant is actually being developed, not the entire 70-acre site, I don't believe. There are, public water and sanitary sewer are not available to the property, there is an existing well. The site will be served by onsite septic and well, and the second well will be deliver, will be drilled to provide water for the operation of the plant. There will be a fire-water pump engine that needs to be installed and for the event of the, any emergencies. It is served by the Chugiak Volunteer Fire Department. Currently, gas is not available, but of course it will be extended to the site and telephone will be made available to the site. Noise, air, water, and other forms of environmental pollution were reviewed on pages 11 and 12. This property, this project will not, it, the larger lot is impacted by type A wetlands, but no, this development will not impact those type A wetlands. The project is not located in a flood plain or in an avalanche area. And as mentioned before, air and noise are being monitored, have been monitored, and appear to meet the standards for both the state and the municipality. Drainage is not expected to be a problem on a site this large. Overall, the site topography is generally flat, there is a large rock outcrop to the south of the proposed development area. The western portion of the site is approximately 10 to 15 feet higher than the east portion of the site and surface flow does appear to be directed north and east toward the Kinnick Arm of Coop Inlet. And this, this use has been on this property for many years, starting with the original Anchorage Power Station that was built in the 30s, I believe, and is now a historic facility. And so it should be compatible. The closest residential uses are 1,400 feet to the west and a number of those residential uses experienced a fire and now, are now abandoned. And the site is large enough to accommodate future growth, dependent on population. It is also very heavily forested with birch, spruce, and undergrowth. The department does recommend approval of the conditional use, subject to four conditions on page 14 of the packet. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Dean.
Through the chair, could you tell us if there's going to be steam clouds coming from this facility?
On a site visit with the MEA representatives, that question was asked and the response was shortly, and I'm sure they can expand on it, there doesn't expect to be steam clouds from the tower.
How tall is the facility going to be?
Well, the main building is about 48 feet, 35 feet.
About 35.
Huh?
Yes, 35.
35 feet. The, the stack, tallest stack will be 90 feet tall.
90?
Yes.
Okay. And then, can you see it from the highway? Will you be able to see it from that distance or not?
It didn't exist now, but it probably would extend somewhat above the tree line.
Do you, do you know how many employees will be employed on the facility on a daily basis?
Within a 24-hour period, because the power plant runs 24-hour, there will be approximately 17 employees on, I assume, three shifts of the 24-hour period. And there will be technicians called in every three to four years to, for an overhaul of the facility. And that would increase the number of people for a short period of time while that overhaul work is underway.
Thank you.
Ms. Pease.
Quick question for staff. On page eight, you cited compliance with the Comprehensive Plan, the Chugiak Eagle River Comprehensive Plan, but it's, some text was cut off or omitted, so I just wanted to make sure when we get to findings, we know what the compliance is.
Oh, and I-
And if you have a copy?
The plan.
Okay, I don't have a copy with me. Oh, good.
Ms. Pease has a copy of the plan also, so she's looking through to see what was left
Okay, the goal is to provide public facilities and services that are located, designed, and maintained to accommodate current and future needs of the area in an effective, cost-efficient, and timely manner.
Thank you.
Any further questions for staff? Okay, well, I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing. The same rules that applied last time apply this time. The petitioner has 10 minutes, representative groups such as community councils have five minutes, and individuals have three minutes. Sir, you're the petitioner, so please state your name for the record.
The name is Jesse Collette, C-O-L-L-E-T-T-E. First name is spelled J-E-S-S-E. And I work for Matanuska Electric, that's MEA. And thank you, Ms. O'Brien, for doing a very thorough job. You really, you took the wind out of my sails here for the presentation because what I'll do is just give you a brief description of how the plant will be configured and, and state our intent to obey the rules. What we intend to do, and I don't know if I can take this with me, I guess I can't, tell you what. Let me just describe approximately where it'll be and I'll move this around so everybody can see it. As Margaret or Ms. O'Brien mentioned, we're going to be very close to the Akutina Village exit on the parks on the Glen Highway, I should say. And in fact, the Akutina Village exit would be right about here on the drawing, if the drawing went this far over. So we're about, oh, maybe a quarter of a mile over in a very densely forested area. And what we intend to build is a natural gas-fired reciprocating engine power plant that will generate about 170 megawatts of power. And just to give you a frame of reference, that 170 megawatts is more than enough, more than enough to supply the Matanuska Electric area, service area. And we anticipate having that finished by approximately the end of 2014, definitely before the end of 2014. It'll be a very clean burning power plant, as I mentioned, natural gas, low emissions, and as Ms. O'Brien mentioned, we've already received our minor air source permit from the, from the air, air board here in the state. Let me move on to the, to the next drawing. I wish I had one of those portable mics here. I'll just describe this very briefly because I, I think that engineering drawings like this are great for engineers, but maybe not so great for other people. The engines will be in a large building, they'll be totally enclosed, and I mention that for a reason. With any engine, it's very similar to the engine in your automobile, only 40 feet long and 30 feet tall, noise is a factor. But in this case, they'll be in a building that's completely soundproofed and you'll be able to have a conversation outside that building, very similar to what we're having here today, without the microphone. The exhaust will come out into about a 90-foot array of exhaust stacks that will disperse the, the few emissions that do come out of the engine. Oops, sorry. And we'll have the ancillary tanks and pumps and compressors and so forth on the other side of the facility. The electricity will exit out the east side of the facility and, and be distributed throughout Lastly, lastly, the most important thing, tree belt. We're gonna have a tree buffer around the facility, and I colored it in myself, I think my first grade teacher would be very proud I stayed between the lines. Again, 250 or 200 feet on one side, 100 feet on the, on the north side, and then narrower on this side. I wanted to point out, though, that this entire area is forested, so if you can envision it, there's a hillside that starts right here and kind of heads off toward you that's nothing but forest. There are a few corridors that are currently cut through it for the, the current high-voltage lines that will be connected to the plant. And, and we, as, as the company, the plan to develop this, will, will cut only the minimum corridors we need to, to supply the plant. So for example, we'll have a corridor right about here in the, what would it be, the northwestern side of the plant, where the natural gas will come onto the site. We'll have another corridor on the, the western edge where people will drive onto the site. And we've already got a corridor where the distribution line will leave the site and supply our area. We will maintain that, we'll monitor it yearly. If there's any sick or dying trees, we'll, we'll know that and we'll know how many to plant to replace them. We intend to comply. We intend to be good neighbors, it'll be a quiet plant, and, I keep hitting that thing, sorry. And we ask for your serious consideration.
Okay, Ms. Dean, you have a question?
Through the chair, how far away is the gas line from, I wanted to ask the petitioner.
Oh, pardon.
Through the chair, how far away is the gas line to the property?
The gas line is approximately right here and it's about, I want to say 500 feet.
Oh, so it's not too bad.
Not very far.
What size of main are you gonna put in there?
Well, the main that goes by is a 20-inch diameter-
Mr. Wilson, could you keep the, keep the drawing up, please? Thank you, Mr. Jesse. The, I have a couple of questions. Where will you tie into the transmission lines, or will you have a new line?
Gas or the electric?
Electric. The main, the main line from Beluga?
Yeah. No, this drawing, the poor drawing you illustrated on.
Sure, you're gonna need to talk into the mic.
Let me just hold this up, probably the best thing. It's hard to see in this drawing, but there is a main one-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand-volt line that actually goes by the plant. And if you look very closely, you'll see a dark area here. And that dark area is where we've actually trimmed the forest so that the lines can hang free. And what we've done, and this was done a long time ago, is that we've got a branch, one-fifteen KV line that comes down into something called the Reed Substation. And then it also leaves the Reed Substation and rejoins the one-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand-volt line over here. So there's a bit of a triangle right here, and I apologize, I could pass this around-
No, that's fine, that's fine. We've got the concept. The reason I ask the question is whether you're gonna build a new transmission line.
No. Well, let me, let me put an asterisk by that. We are eventually planning to build a new transmission line that comes out this side of the plant and supplies the, what we're gonna call the hospital circuit. In other words, it'll come to the hospital area of Palmer and Wacilla.
Oh.
Yeah.
So that'll have a new line up going north?
Eventually, that's right. It's not part of this particular project, it's a separate, separate project.
I'd just like to look at the thing holistically.
Okay.
On the gas side, where's the line tying in there?
Okay, where the line will tie in is right about here where the railroad tracks cross the Glen Highway. And so what will happen is, the new six-inch line will actually go underneath the highway along with the railroad tracks, and follow the railroad tracks and enter the site right about here.
And that'll be coming from, where will you get your supply then? Or have you secured this supply?
Oh, you mean the actual supply of the gas? Fortunately, other people are working on that, not me. But they, but they tell me that they are zeroing in on supplying natural gas.
Okay.
I can only say it'll come from the ground.
We're a planning commission, so, you know, one of the reasons I was interested in getting on the commission was looking way down the road. If you can dream, or take the vision look for a minute with me, the, in the next, as our supply of generation in the rail belt gets ages, and the generation facilities have to be replaced or displaced by another form of energy. And I know MEA's looking at various forms of energy, including gas and hydro and others. What is your plan for this, this one hundred and seventy megawatt? That's peak power?
That's peak, that's right.
What's your firm power?
Well, the average load in the Matanuska Electric region is about ninety-one megawatts, but it goes as far down as forty-two megawatts, and at the peak, it's approximately one hundred and forty-five to one hundred and forty-eight. So there's a little bit of growth potential included in this, in this particular power plant. And one of the reasons why we picked this particular technology is because it's extremely efficient all the way down. We had originally thought about putting in a combined-cycle power plant, which is a series of combustion turbines which supply a steam turbine. The problem you run in with that, and run into with that, is it's very efficient at full load, but as soon as you bring that load down, you lose efficiency very rapidly. And this particular technology, because the engines, although the engines are extremely large, they don't actually make that much power. They make about seventeen megawatts each. So as the, as the load ramps up or down, you bring each one down to half, fifty percent power, and then either turn it off or turn on the next one, depending on which way you're going on, in the load. The efficiency you get is probably about fifteen percent more than once you get in your personal automobile, and about fifteen percent more than you'd get from a combustion turbine power plant, which is a lot. That's significant.
Will this supply your whole system?
This will supply the entire MEA system, that's right.
For the foreseeable future, twenty years, or whatever?
The foreseeable future, right.
But it's capable, capable of ramping up and down very efficiently, and that's a real valuable thing to have, especially when you have other sources of energy that are non-dispatchable and have problems.
It's extremely valuable. We studied this, we did one model of, I should say several models, of different technologies and how they would compare throughout their life cycles. And of course, you run into the problem that some technologies are very inexpensive going in, but let's put it this way, they don't get the same gas mileage that this one does. And so when you, when you look at their costs over a period of thirty years, you find out they actually cost more than this. This costs a little, a little bit more going in, but the efficiency will pay for itself very rapidly.
And you'll, you'll reduce rates.
Well, that's not my department. I'm the engineer that's building it.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Pease.
Yes, through the chair. You indicated that this power plant will probably meet the needs of the utility for the foreseeable future. It does note in our packet that the site's large enough to allow expansion to serve future population growth. How comfortable are you with the noise limits at this location? And would additional plants bump up above the fifty decibel nighttime, sixty decibel daytime noise limits? Because I note with two plants, it's at forty-nine currently.
I would have been nervous had I not toured two facilities with these exact engines in them. And inside the buildings where the engines are running, you can't hear yourself think. But as soon as you step out the door and close the door, it's, it's not much noisier than in here. And so I, I'm very confident that we'll be able to make the, make the fifty dB limit.
And would a third plant have a cumulative noise effect, or-
Well-
Or should we even think about that, because your capacity is so good with this project?
I think what you're referring to is the initial, let me know if I'm too close to this thing, by the way. The initial rezoning plan called for three combined-cycle power plants. And we've, we've gone ahead and done the analysis and decided to put in these reciprocating engines instead. So rather than the three combined-cycle power plants, we'll have up to ten of these Wacilla reciprocating engines, very similar to the engines in your car. It's a different, it's a different approach.
Okay, so the, the noise limit's been met for now, and that's-
Right.
Good for the foreseeable future, I guess, it sounds like.
And it'll be engineered so that we continue to meet the, the noise criteria.
Okay, thank you.
Right.
Any further questions for Mr. Colette?
I have one question. I noticed where you're gonna have a fire water pump, and you're gonna be protected by the Chugiak Volunteer Fire Department. I live in Chugiak.
Right.
So I know about the volunteer fire department there. They can deal with house fires, but I don't know if they've ever dealt with commercial facilities. And I also see where you've got a well that apparently isn't putting out very much, so you're gonna dig another well. Now, do you intend to have a, a large storage tank for water on site?
Absolutely.
Okay, how many gallons?
Approximately a million.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, any further questions? Yes, Mr. Wilson.
Did you say the steam plume, there would be a plume, even though you're dispersing?
There will be no steam plume. There won't be a steam plume, because these particular engines have an enclosed cooling system, identical to what you have in your car.
Okay.
So, so the other advantage is, they won't use any water, and they won't make any noise by having a cooling tower. Just a series of essentially horizontal radiators like in your personal automobile with fans underneath of them.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, sir, you've got five minutes and twenty-three seconds for rebuttal, and I'll go ahead and put the public hearing for other people to testify. So you can go ahead and take your seat, and we'll call you up a little bit later.
Okay, anybody wish to testify? Please come forward and state your name for the record. Good, pull the mic down if you want. There you go.
My, my name is Arlinda Downing. It's not really a testifier, mine is a question or concern. I live in the section twenty-nine, and the project, I think, is section nineteen, correct? Okay. My concern is, one is, how will that affect my home insurance? Will it go up since that's a power station? And, once it's built, will you all deliver gas to my home? I'd like to, because right now I'm there, I'm under MEA. I have a power line hooked, I mean, all the way to my home, and I'd like to convert to gas if I can. So that's, those are my issues.
Okay, any questions for Ms. Downing?
Thank you, ma'am, for your testimony.
Anybody else wish to testify? Anybody else wish to testify?
Okay, Mr. Colette, you've got five minutes and something, five twenty-three, for rebuttal.
It won't take that long. Unfortunately, I wish I could say yes to either of those questions, but Matanuska Electric is not in the insurance business. We, I can't, I can't tell the lady that just spoke what our insurance rates will do. And unfortunately, we're also not in the gas business. We're in the process of looking for gas, and we'll be working with N-Star, which is the transmission, gas transmission company. But as far as getting gas hooked up to somebody's house, I would have no, no leverage there. I, sorry.
Okay, sir, anything else?
Thank you for hearing us, and thank you again to Ms. O'Brien for doing such a great summation. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thanks, sir. Okay, the public hearing is closed, and the matter rests with the commission. Been motioned and made by Mr. Wilson, seconded by Mr. Parks. Mr. Wilson, please state your motion.
I move that we approve the, in the matter of case number twenty-eleven dash one-zero-three for a site plan review for a power, power generation station by Matanuska Electric Association. I move that, I guess that's it. And, subject to the conditions listed on the bottom of page thirteen and page fourteen.
Okay, it's been seconded by Mr. Parks. Do you want to speak to your motion, Mr. Wilson?
The applicant has outlined and responded to all of the special limitations, and the, and the findings, applicable ordinances and statutes, and the Comprehensive Plan, and I guess that's it. And, subject to the conditions listed on the bottom of page thirteen and page fourteen.
Okay, it's been seconded by Mr. Parks. Do you want to speak to your motion, Mr. Wilson?
The applicant has outlined and responded to all of the special limitations, and the, and the findings, applicable ordinances and statutes, and the Comprehensive Plan, and
Okay, any further comments? Ms. Pease.
Just note that the Eagle River, Eagle River Community Council supports this project, and we've heard no, no negative public comment, just some questions at tonight's hearing.
Any further comments? Any objection? And that passes unanimously. Okay, we've got to revisit our decision on the need to continue two thousand and ten dash one hundred, two thousand and eleven, one oh eight, because we didn't really give any direction to, to staff. And so I've made some notes here that the direction to staff should be as follows, and please indicate if there were other things that, that we wanted staff to do. Number one, again, this is the case for the Alaska Pacific University and the, that area. Number one, we said people who testified cannot testify again. A petitioner has five minutes rebuttal remaining. We wanted them to reach out to homeowners, associations, and community councils. And the date to be determined by the staff for this to be brought up to us, again, will be when time is available. And we didn't really say whether it would be at the November meeting or whatever, but just at the next available time, and that's what I, what I heard. And then finally, there was a request for information on the road that would come in, but that is not part of the case. That's just sort of information, but the, the road was not part of the case, but there was a request for information on the road. So, so, and I, I don't know, was there any other instructions that we put out in, in our discussion?
Yes, I believe that I put out requests that the land use designations be clarified so that it's, the public understands what set of uses are allowed, whether it's all the PLI uses in all of those districts, or whether, as was implied, there will be more of a flavor of commercial and retail in some of those districts.
Right, I remember.
And any other clarification, so they can see what the uses are, will be, and whether this changes what the uses could be.
I think those were the, the main, oh, Ms. Yoshimura.
And, following up on Ms. Dean, which I, I think I'm doing, is, we would like to see a staff review of what the policies and procedures are for master plan approvals.
And I think we were talking there specifically about time, or sort of schedules, and when things hit, hit the public, and is it ten days, is it twenty-one days, is it, when do you see the, the actual documents? So, and we're putting this on the public record, because we, we didn't, nothing was recorded when we were in our committee of the whole, that, that's not recorded. So we have to put it officially on the record, and that's what we've done now.
Just briefly, it is recorded, but a committee of the whole is, is not part of the minutes, and it's considered a separate entity. And so, when you come out of the committee of the whole, you need to stand and report.
Yeah, and we need to remember that, that we repeat ourselves on the record.
I missed that, I'm sorry.
Ms. Dean.
I just had one more comment to make. We need to have a particular set of standards as to when we send a project back to the planning department for further information. Does it take one homeowner coming in and saying that they didn't get the information? Does it take four homeowners? At what point does it, do we have that breakoff where enough people have showed up from the public that we, we send it back for, for the review? Does that make sense?
Yes.
And just to follow up on that, what is a major master- And just to follow up on that, what is a major master plan, conceptual plan, and what is a minor one? I think, you know, we all know when we see a real big one, but maybe a little guidance from the staff on how we can make that determination ahead of time instead of doing it on the fly.
Okay.
I would like to just make one comment from Ms. Dean. I don't think that there's a standard that, at least for me, from my point of view, that I could hear 10 people make comments that they didn't have enough time, and I wouldn't necessarily be influenced by whether it's 10, or two, or one. I think it's the process that we need to look at. My concern is that I think on these large plans, and I don't know if it's by acreage or what it is, but certainly we can say a plan that's over 100 acres, like APU is, requires, in my opinion, a little more public interface than what we saw, at least what we perceive to have seen tonight, lack of community council, homeowners associations, and that sort of thing. This was a big deal, in my opinion, the APU situation.
Ms. Pease?
I agree that for the larger projects, there should be more advanced time for the public to look at the plan. But that means not just the community council outreach, but the planned document itself needs to be available on the web or at City Hall in the library. And the staff analysis should be too, because the public's not accustomed to going through a really dense plan. And also, the staff sometimes has important recommendations or changes that the staff and the, I mean, that the community council and individuals need to consider. So it would be good if there were some timeframe, if the public notices 21 days ahead, how far in advance should the documents be available? That would be a point to consider for a big, thick, or complicated project such as a master plan.
Well, we could just use the West District plan as a good example, the number of meetings that we've had on that, the number of workshops, and obviously it includes a lot more. But, you know, land, and it's an important economic engine, but so is this UMed district that we're talking about. So, you know, we've not given this nearly the attention that we've given the Hillside District plan, the West Anchorage plan, et cetera, et cetera.
Any other comments from commissioners? Well, as you know, this is, Ms. Pease and myself will be leaving the commission as of tonight, and so Nancy, I'm going to let you have the floor if you wish to say anything and parting advice or whatever.
Sure. I think it was really fitting that we got to review the long-range transportation plan on our last. At that, and we're a land use body. We can get the land use we want by investing transportation dollars the way, in a forward-thinking way. That's one of the powerful connections that is still overlooked. It's not the traffic that drives the transportation plan. It should be what pattern of land use do we want? And if we really want infill and redevelop and that sort of thing, it takes transportation projects that support that. And then the other thing I would say is keep thinking big and keep thinking broad. We all get to travel a little bit, and there are a lot of cities out there doing it different ways, and it's great to go to Vancouver, or Portland, or, you know, if you're so lucky, Barcelona, and see what other cities are doing. They're putting their money into infrastructure. It looks a little different from ours, so keep looking around.
Thanks, Nancy. And I've enjoyed my time. I've been on the commission since '95 with a three-year break from 2000 to 2003. So, you know, I'm sort of the memory. And, no, you're the memory. So, you know, keep up the good work. Remember that the decisions that you make are going to determine what this city looks like, you know? And I don't think we want to look like Houston, Texas, or someplace like that. But also, I don't think we want to look like Portland completely either, you know? So we're somewhere in the middle. And, you know, do your planning and thinking as to how you go. And you're going to have new people here, they're going to need your help, you're going to have to reorganize, you're going to have to get some new bosses and everything else. So again, I've enjoyed it, and I'll probably be harassing you from the other side of the counter. So what I'd like to do now is turn the gavel over to Connie and let her close the meeting.
I just want to make a couple of remarks. Nancy, you've done a lot of heavy lifting on this commission, and we're going to miss you because we're all going to have to step up and do a lot more work, because we let you do a lot of, carry a lot of our load for us. And I've had the honor of sharing a couple of meetings when Art is gone, and I have to say, Art, it's not as easy as it looks. And so thank you very much for your time, Ms. Chair. It's been much appreciated. Thanks. Staff, do you have any announcements?
Yes, Mr. and Madam Chair. I've been asked at the end of today, so I don't have a lot of details, but for the restart of Title 21, the next public hearing may be December 12th. However, most of that meeting is taken up with AMAT's 2035 plan. It's possible that Title 21 will begin again before you on December 19th. Also, we have just received the mayor's review of approximately 35 items, and some of those are still to be further discussed, and more items will be forthcoming. And if not today, I'm not sure, but the whole series of documents is actually going to be posted on the web, meaning what was approved by the commission initially, then Mr. Coffey's comments, then the responses written by staff to Mr. Coffey's comments, to the mayor's comments, on down the line. All of that is going to be on the website. And apparently, returning back to that tight timeline. Also, the commission did ask that Mountaineer Drive, the case 2010-76, be set as soon as possible. It was tentatively set for November 14th, I think it was, at the scheduled director's meeting with the commission. But due to the restart of Title 21, as well as Chapter 10 for the Eagle River Code, which are going together, the department expects December 5th or 12th will be more likely date for the further information on that case.
We did ask at, when we revisit those procedural matters for Mountaineer, that Director Weaver and Dennis Wheeler be in attendance at that meeting?
I'm trying to...
Okay. And are we having a meeting next week?
I, I've got a double check that, I got really confused with the Mountaineer being the number of problems, one time, two second time, another time, so I'll have to double check that, and I'll ask for the six people, our, yeah.
And was that for the West District plan? The meeting next week, theoretically?
The, you're talking about the October 7th for
Seventeenth.
October 17th, excuse me, for the West Anchorage District plan, but we didn't get a full response enough for a quorum for on October 17th as of the end of the day today. We didn't hear from you or Rich, and I don't think we heard from the new commissioner. Sorry about that. Corliss didn't have a response back from everybody by the end of today. We didn't have a quorum for the October 17th meeting. There was a memo put on the table on the status of the West Anchorage District plan from FEED.
I'm available.
We would have to give, put the, you would have had to have gotten the packet today for Monday, and I don't, and, let's see, and in his memo, he's recommending November 14th.
All right, okay. So no meeting next week then?
No meeting next week.
Okay. Yeah.
Okay, is there everything, do we have a motion for adjournment?
No adjournment.
There are seconds. All right, we need to adjourn, thank you.